We're live.
We're live.
Okay, evening all. This is a regular meeting of the Fairhaven Zoning Board of Adjustment. Adequate notice of the meeting has been given pursuant to the provisions of the Open Public Meetings Act. At the time of the board reorganization in January of this year, the board adopted its regular meeting schedule for the year. Notice of the schedule was sent to and published in the Asbury Park Press on January 19th, 2022, and the Two River Times on January 20th, 2022. That notice was also posted on the bulletin board in Borough Hall and has remained continuously posted there as required by the statute. A copy of the notice is and has been available to the public and is on file in the Borough of the Office clerk. A copy of the notice has also been sent to members of the public says such has requested such information in accordance with the statute. Adequate notice having been given, the board secretary is directed to include this statement in the minutes of the meeting. Roll call please, Sandy.
Mr. Nick Chesney.
Here.
Ms. Quigley.
Yeah.
Mr. Ridgeway.
Here.
Mr. Ryan.
Here.
Mr. La Barbera.
Here.
Dr. Lawfer.
Here.
Mr. Kinsella. Mr. Shioveti. And Mr. Leader.
Thank you. Salute to the flag, please.
I'm sorry, did we get Mr. Kinsella? He's here. I don't know. Did you hear him, Sandy?
Yeah, I'm here. Oh, wait.
I heard him. It was a little... You're on.
I thought I heard him.
Alright. Okay, I'm sorry. I just wanted to make sure you knew he responded.
Alright, I'm gonna mute out again because I have a bunch of women downstairs.
Oh, no.
There's a party going on here.
Okay. Salute to the flag, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag. The United States of America.
America.
To the Republic of America, which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. Um, we have... Uh, should we get through the Nick, um, uh, postponement first, Mike, I guess?
I would suggest, Mr. Chairman, that we should do that in case there's any instant party. So, this matter, as the board will recall, Allen Nick, 33 Cedar Avenue. Uh, the board commenced hearing on February 3, 2022. It was continued for the applicant to take a look at the plans. My understanding is they've submitted some revised plans. Uh, I contacted Mr. Von Arx's office today just to let him know that we would have a maximum of six voting members on this. Among other items of variance relief, they require D4 variance relief for excess habitable floor ratio. Um, Mr. Von Arx sent in a letter this afternoon indicating that as a result of those circumstances, he was requesting that the matter be carried to the next meeting of the board without the necessity of further notice. Now, Mr. Chairman, I don't know when you want to establish or when the board wants to establish when we're going to be going back live. Because once we know that, it's helpful when we announce that we're carrying to a new meeting date to indicate whether it's live or going to be Zoom. So, I don't know if next month would be too soon, and if we carry this to next month, then it wouldn't matter. We'll just announce that it's going to be next month by Zoom.
Um, I do want to have that discussion, however, given that Mr. Leader is not in present, not present this evening. I really would rather have that when we have a full board here and everybody can make their feelings known about live meetings. Um, I think, uh, for, for intensive purposes, we should move, uh, we'll make a, or I'll make a motion to have it in person, obviously, in Zoom again for next month for the May meeting. Sandy, I, I think we only have one new one on for May. Is that correct?
Yes. There's one new one, and they haven't noticed yet because I told them to wait until after this meeting.
Okay, good. So, I don't think there'll be an issue, even if we wind up not resolving, um, Porter or Pimella tonight, which I hope we would, uh, we'll still have space in May then. So, uh, for that purpose, I will make a motion to carry the Nick application to the May 5th. Is it May the 5th? May the 5th meeting.
Without the necessity of renotice.
Without the necessity of renotice, yeah.
Subject to the applicant providing a stipulation extending time which the board has to act for the matter otherwise being deemed dismissed without prejudice.
That's exactly what I was gonna say.
I knew that.
Second.
Mr. Nick Chesney.
Yes.
Ms. Quigley.
Yes.
Mr. Ridgeway.
Yes.
Mr. Ryan.
Yes.
Mr. La Barbera.
Yes.
Uh, and Mr. Kinsella. Oh, Dr. Lawfer, I'm sorry. And Dr. Lawfer.
Yes.
Sorry.
Yes.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
I won't take it personally.
So, so, and interested parties, the Nick matter is being carried to May 5, 2022 without the necessity of renotice. Please mark your calendar accordingly. There'll be no further notice, and it'll be continued in this fashion by Zoom, same place, same time via Zoom. Right? Did we, are we able to ascertain if anybody, any interested parties on Nick have any issues? If they raise their hands, not with regard to the merits. Any procedural problems on Nick? Anybody in the audience?
If I, if I may ask, Michael, when we go for that next meeting, if they could put, you know, a complete package together, if there's any changes and have everything in one fell swoop, that'd be super helpful. If there's no changes, that's fine, but just centralizing all the documents in one folder and sending them, you know, prior would be great.
Yeah, I think we had a little, a few late additions there from, uh, okay, from their side, which has been a little difficult.
Alright, so I'm gonna assume there's no response from anybody in the audience. Okay, thank you.
Okay, good. Uh, moving on, we're gonna start this evening with the continuance of the Porter application. I will be recusing from this, uh, from this application. But Dr. Lawfer will be, will be chairing this portion of the meeting. Uh, can you take me off of the dais, Sandy?
Or if not, we could just have Mr. Nachesna go dark.
Alright, so, uh, let me, let me start out. The Porter application is being carried from the March 3 meeting. And, um, uh, I'll ask Mr. Irene for the list of board members, uh, that are eligible to vote on this application.
And before we do that, Dr. Lawfer, if I may, can we take a motion from one of the board members insofar as both our chair is out today and our vice chair has recused himself? Can we take a motion from a board member to designate Dr. Lawfer as sitting in in the chair on this? Should we get a second and do a roll call?
I'll make that motion.
A second. A second.
Um, Ms. Quigley.
Yes.
Mr. Ridgeway.
Yes.
Mr. Ryan.
Yes.
Mr. La Barbera.
Yes.
Dr. Lawfer.
Yes.
And Mr. Kinsella.
Yes.
Okay, so in response to Dr. Lawfer's question, it's, it's my understanding, and Sandy, I'm gonna ask you to correct me if I'm wrong, that everyone present now, 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, uh, board members were present at the March 3, 2022 proceeding, is that right?
That's correct.
Of our six board members who are here tonight, are any of you who were not present on March 3? No response. Everybody's eligible, Dr. Lawfer, if we conclude tonight.
Good, and, um, we want to be sure that the applicant wants to proceed, knowing that they'll require five affirmative votes, uh, for a D4 variance.
So, why don't we bring up Mr. Brodsky, who's applicants counsel? And I should indicate for the record that I did call Mr. Brodsky today just to give him a heads up that it looked like we were gonna have a maximum of six voting members. And, uh, when I spoke on the phone, he indicated that it was his inclination to proceed. Uh, now, whether we conclude or not, that may be another issue, but we can just bring Mr. Brodsky up and make sure nothing's changed in that regard.
Bringing him forward.
There's Mr. Brodsky. We'll let you put your appearance on the record.
Sure, uh, Mr. Chair Members of the Board, Rick Brodsky, on behalf of the applicants, Samuel and Lauren Porter.
So, Mr. Brodsky, I don't know if you've heard, but confirming my conversation with you this morning, this afternoon, uh, we only have a maximum of six voting members on your application tonight. Dvarian relief is at issue. You understand that if it gets to a vote, you would require five affirmative votes out of maximum six voting members. You still want to proceed tonight?
Yeah, um, as we discussed, um, Mr. Irene, I, I thought we would proceed and, uh, we'll see where we, uh, get and, uh, how far along we go.
Okay. So, uh, so I don't for, so I don't forget, I'm gonna swear in, Ms. Grue, our professional planner. At the earlier meeting, Ms. Gable was present. Let's go, and you're muted. We gotta get you off the mute. There you go. You just sworn a testimony to give the board a bit of truth, all truth and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Thank you so much.
Mr. Irene, do we need to review the notice materials or vote on the completeness of the application, being that we've done that before?
No, the application, the application was deemed completed at the last meeting, and the matter was carried to tonight's meeting without the necessity of renotice.
Okay. Uh, can I ask Ms. Grue to, uh, review the requested variances?
Um, certainly. Um, I believe that, uh, the board members have, uh, a memo from April 5th, um, on this application. And within that memo, we have reviewed the amended and revised plans based upon comments from the last meeting. And I will just go over, and in this is, uh, detailed as to what variances are necessary. Um, the following are the existing non-conforming conditions. Um, the minimum lot area, uh, for the R30 zone is 30,000 square feet, where 21,539 square feet is existing and proposed. Um, the minimum lot depth, uh, for the R30 is 200 feet, where 161.83 feet is existing and proposed. In terms of existing non-conformities that will be exacerbated or new variances required, um, the maximum habitable floor area ratio, uh, for the zone is .15. Um, the existing, uh, uh, ratio is .162, and what is proposed is .183. The second variance, um, under, uh, under new variances is the minimum side yard setback. Um, the setback in the zone is 20 feet. Um, 20.5 feet is existing, and 19 feet is proposed. Um, the minimum combined side yard setback is, in the zone, is 40 feet. Um, 45.7 feet is existing, and 39.5 feet is proposed. Mr. Chairman and board members, those are the variances that are being requested.
Mr. Mr. Brodsky, would you address these requests and tell the board, uh, what's changed since the last time that the application was presented? So that we can know, uh, what was proposed initially, and what the changes were made, and how you plan on, on addressing those changes.
Sure. Uh, good evening, Doctor Law for members of the board. Uh, yes, um, as the board may recall, back in March, we were in on this application, uh, which essentially seeks, uh, the, uh, expansion of an, of an, of an existing two-car garage, um, and to construct a second-story, uh, home office above, above that garage. When we were here last time, um, uh, it was, it was a little larger, uh, uh, square footage proposed, and we've, we've reduced it in a couple of, from a couple of respects. First, um, when we originally, the original application, uh, proposed extending the garage, uh, by six additional feet, um, which brought us to within 17.2 feet of that side setback, uh, side property line, where 20 is, is required. We've cut that, we've cut that proposed addition, uh, extension from six feet to three, to three feet. And so what that enabled us to do was to, uh, although we don't entirely comply with the 20-foot set, side setback requirement, um, we get, uh, to, uh, a 19-foot, uh, proposed setback, um, as opposed to the 17.2 feet we had proposed last time. And keep in mind, and you'll, you, uh, as you may recall, that is, is only a portion of the proposed addition actually encroaches into that 20-foot setback in the rear. And as we move closer to the front, um, we do ultimately get to the 20-foot setback and even exceed the 20-foot setback once we're to the front of the proposed addition. The property, i- if you're looking at the site plan or, and, and our architect will pull it up in a moment, um, the, the, the lines are not parallel, the property lines, and so that they're sort of skewed, and that's why we've got that unusual situation where we encroach at one point and exceed the side setback, uh, at the other point at the front of the property. Um, when, when Mr. Condors pulls it up, you'll see that more clearly. The other thing that we did, uh, was, or, or part of that was we reduced the proposed square footage, uh, with resp- with respect to the, um, second story, uh, second floor addition. And by reducing that square footage, um, we had proposed last time, um, an FAR, uh, uh, in excess of, of the .183 that we're proposing, uh, uh, now with the revised plan. And one of the things that we had discussed last time and we looked at was, um, the, because we have such a, um, uh, significantly undersized lot, 21,539 square feet, um, where 30,000 is the minimum lot size in the zone, we kind of took a look at, uh, the, uh, FAR requirement in the R20 zone, uh, which kind of is, is, is closer to the lot size that, to, to, to that which we have. And the FAR that's permitted in that R20 zone is .18. And, uh, what we're proposing here is the .183. So, we're, we're just slightly above that, um, in, in, in terms of our proposed FAR. Um, and we pointed out last time, um, and it's, and it's, and it's even more so here, that, um, we are well under, well under the requirements, uh, in, in, in this, the R30 zone for both on lot coverage, on building coverage, um, and well below the cap, the maximum habitable flat floor area that is, uh, permitted in both the R30 zone and even in the R20 zone. Last time, when we were here, our proposed, uh, a square footage, um, while it was, while it was less than that permitted in the, uh, by the maximum in the R30, we exceeded the cap, if you will, in the R20. We are now below that cap, uh, with a, a total proposed square footage of 3,943 square feet, uh, where the cap in the R20 zone is 4,140. Um, so, so we did, we do, oh, and, and another important component of the, um, of the revised plan that you have before you is that with respect to, when, when I talked about that partial encroachment into the side setback for the proposed addition, and I guess, I guess it's the northeasterly corner. Um, the proposed second-story addition, that is, the, the, the home office addition, has been set back well in excess of the 20-foot, 20-foot minimum side setback required. It's actually goes, and Tony Condors, who's on, will correct me if I'm wrong, but it's set back, I, I believe it's 26 feet. So, we substantially reduced, uh, the, 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 the size of what we're proposing. Um, so I think, Dr. Law, for that, in a, in kind of, in, in a nutshell, describes what, what the, uh, the nature of the revisions were. Um, it's smaller. Uh, and, uh, we also indicated on the plan that there's an existing shed on that northerly, uh, property line, which we're proposing to relocate to a, to a conforming location on the property. So, with all of that, um, unless the board has any questions, what I'd like to do is to have, uh, Tony Condors, the architect, um, be pulled in so he can walk the board through real quick, uh, the details of the revised plan.
Thank you, Mr. Brodsky. Can we ask Mr. Condors to be specific on where he wants to, uh, locate that shed?
Sure.
And, and if he would be so kind as to, uh, uh, to show us on his plan, uh, what changes he has made.
Sure.
So, I'm gonna bring in Mr. Condors.
Yep.
Dr. Lawfer, is it your preference to wait until after Mr. Condors breathes to ask questions to Mr. Brodsky? Sure.
Uh, please.
Yes, sir.
So, Mr. Condors, we swore in last time, but out of an abundance of caution, I'm gonna swear in again. If you raise your right hand, you do swear a testimony to give the board a bit of truth, all truth and nothing but the truth?
Yes, I do.
And, Mr. Brodsky, I believe what we have now is floor plans and elevations prepared by Anthony M. Condors, AIA. Free sheets, May 27, 2021, last revised March 25, 2022. Is that the set we're working off of, Mr. Condors?
That's correct.
Yes, and it's, yes.
Okay, and I believe, Sandy, that we are up to A5. So, we're gonna mark that set of Mr. Condors's plans as Exhibit A-5. And I believe Dr. Lawfer asked that they be brought up, Mr. Condors, when you're ready, and, uh, so you can walk us around the changes.
I will do that right now.
Thank you.
Okay, I shared my screen. Um, can everybody see it?
Yep.
Okay, um, I will start with, uh, real quick. I, we do show, just, uh, speaking of the shed, um, just real quick, because that question was just asked. I do show a tentative location for the shed, which, uh, is in the back corner of the property here. And again, it's a compliant location, but, um, I'm saying tentative because I, I don't know if the homeowners will maybe decide to put it in the other corner or, or here, but I was just trying to illustrate that the shed will be moved to the back of the property, and it will be put into a compliant location. So, does that answer your question?
Thank you.
Okay, good. Um, so I'll, I'll kind of re-explain what we did to get, to get these numbers down to where we have them. Um, the, the first thing I tried to do, based on what the board was, uh, discussing at the last meeting, was I was trying to see how I could improve that side setback. Um, one of the problems was, we, if you remember, we were, we were proposing a mudroom, um, inside of the old garage, which was forcing us to push the, the garage toward the left so we could still maintain a two-car garage. So, I looked, I looked into that, and what we came up with was to, instead of putting the entire mudroom in the garage, we reconfigured the space right here, if you can see my cursor. We actually put the mudroom inside the house, which allowed us to only need to have this narrow hallway, which leads to the stairs, which leads to the second floor. So, we were able to save, um, some width on that, and that's what allowed us to move the, the garage in an additional three feet. So, we are, we're still asking for a variance, um, as Mr. Brodsky explained, but you can see from this diagram that this black triangle that I kind of highlighted here, that's the only, uh, piece of the garage that actually encroaches on the setback. Everything else is compliant. So, that was number one.
One sec, could you just bring back the part that shows the mudroom?
Yes.
The new mudroom, please.
Sure.
And so that, um, that would also provide access to the upstairs bonus room over the garage if the, the variance is granted, right? I mean, they're not, it's not gonna be the only access would be through the garage to the upstairs, or is that?
No, it'll, it'll, it'll come from the mudroom. Yeah, the, the, the stairs are connected to the mudroom, if that's what you're asking.
That, that's great.
Yeah.
I was a little nervous. I think I had the impression that you were only gonna get, be able to get upstairs by going in through the garage.
None of that, that, that space is all interior condition space that's connected to the house.
Mr. Condors, what did you sacrifice from the main plan to bring the mudroom, uh, inside?
Um, we actually were able to just move some things around. We, we lost a little bit of room from this office. Um, we also switched to, switched to half-bath with a pantry. Um, and just were able to make it happen, uh, by just reconfiguring this, uh, this area.
Thank you.
Mr. Condors, I just wanna call out a couple specific changes, right? So, I have the other plans from 16 Feb, I think they presented, uh, last month. So, on your screen, the proposed bath left of your cursor and the proposed pantry to the right of your cursor, a little shifted further up. You swapped them, correct?
That is correct.
Okay. Where the proposed mudroom, you took out the proposed pantry and obviously condensed it into that smaller area where the bath was existing prior.
Yes.
Okay, and then you also changed the proposed living room to the proposed office.
Oh, I'm sorry, that, yeah. I, that's a missed, again, here we go with mislabeling. Um, that, that's actually the sitting, it's not the office. The office is on the second floor. This is the living.
Okay, I just wanted to be clear with that.
Yeah, I, um, you're correct. That's still, it's still a living room. Yes.
Check, check. And then the entryway into the hallway adjacent to the garage, that slab where the front, where that door is, has decreased or has been set back.
It's right, it's been recessed into the house. That's correct.
Check, check. Okay, cool. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Mr. Condors, I have a question while we have this sheet up as well, and I, I appreciate that you pulled the, the garage in a little bit. If I'm not mistaken, if you could pull it in another foot, you wouldn't need, uh, the variances for, uh, the single side yard setback or the combined side yard setback. Is there a reason why the, I'm gonna call it the divider between the two garage door bays? Is there a reason why that couldn't be thinned, uh, by a foot to comply?
Well, um, the, I really have to look at the overall width of the garage. It's, um, 21 foot 10. And, you know, we usually try to keep garages at about a 22-foot width, so, um, if I were to take that extra foot off, we'd be down less than 21 feet. The, the, the separation of those doors is, uh, you know, I would probably move those anyway. But, um, the reason for that extra foot was just to keep the overall width of the garage at, you know, at close to 22 feet.
Tony, that's, that, that is only with that, that triangular area, right? That's a portion of, of the garage.
It's a very small portion of the rear. Yeah.
Okay.
Because of the shape of the lot, as I recall.
Yeah, it's like, uh, I think last time I said it was like, uh, a trapezoid, but I think it's a more like a parallelogram, although not, I had to check my geometry books, but, um, it's, it's not a perfect parallelogram, but I think it's closer to a parallelogram than a trapezoid. Um, it's kind of a mixture of the two. And then, and Tony, just, I don't, I'm not sure if you referenced it, but when I referenced the second-story addition for, um, for the home office, that we set back as well. What, what was that setback now?
I can tell you. Yeah, it's actually set, it's set in, uh, an additional seven feet from what's below it. But it's an additional nine feet from the original garage that we had proposed.
Right, right. So, so we squeezed, uh, whatever, seven to nine feet, uh, uh, off of that, uh, proposed home office room.
That's correct.
Okay.
And, and, and just to further up to what Mr. Ryan was articulating, the, let's call it extra 12 inches that exceeds the setback due to the parallelogram shape that is included due to the two-door, two-garage doors and the space required to put two cars in the garage, sir?
Yes, yeah, and, 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 you know, the doors that we're gonna put on the front of that garage are actually gonna be nine feet wide. I think they might be drawn at eight feet right now, but we are going to make them a little wider, so we, we needed the, uh, and again, I, I said before, we try not to go too much below 22 feet if we can help it inside of a garage.
Mr. La Barbera, you had an additional question for, uh, Mr. Brodsky. Do you wanna ask it now?
Um, Mr. Condors hit it for me, and it had to do with the, the impetus of the application of a, of a proposed office, but it looks like there was just a mislabeling from the previous drawings to now, so.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, Mr. Labarbera, we, I don't know if you recall, but when we, last month, we talked about, when you talk about impetus, Mr. Porter, Samuel Porter, his job is such that he's involved with some international sports teams. And so, he's kind of doing a lot of his calls and work during the overnight hours. So, we were trying to set something up like this, where it would be kind of segregated from the kids who, bedrooms that are asleep, asleep. So, that was the additional impetus behind designing it in this fashion.
Understood. Thank you, sir.
And we confirmed last time, Mr. Brodsky, that there aren't going to be any cooking facilities in that office upstairs, is that right?
No cooking, no cooking facilities. There is a bathroom for the reasons I just talked about, but no cooking.
Yeah, because I think the concern was, and I think Ms. Quigley may have raised this also earlier, one of the board members did, about whether you have direct access from the exterior up to that office. And if you do, and if you end up with some kind of kitchenette, you know, what looks like a separate dwelling unit.
Understood, understood.
Mr. Brodsky, I had a quick question. It looks like, I think, I don't recall closets being in this proposed space, so it looks like that's...
That's new.
Yeah, which I think makes a lot of sense. If, I think we were talking a little last time extensively about the barrier and sound barriers.
Exactly, exactly.
Closet's going to be a nice space to reduce noise between this office and the bedroom.
Yeah, that's exactly the impetus behind that, Mr. Ridgeman, yeah.
Good change.
Yeah. And Tony, anything, can you, do you want to just, if there are no more questions, you want to just pull up the elevations and just remind the board what we showed last time? I don't think it's changed much.
You know, while Anthony or Mr. Condors is pulling that up, what is the square footage of the reworked office? And I agree, I think the addition of closets are a great idea there. But what is the new square footage? Because I think it was 600 feet previously.
Yes, the new square footage of that office is 476.
Okay, great.
I'm sorry, I'm looking at the wrong, hold on, wait a second. You got the wrong plan. Excuse, that's the old plan. 418 square feet.
Thank you.
That's excluding those closets, though. Is that right, Mr. Condors?
That would be including those, because those closets are actually in the addition.
Okay, so, just so Mr. Cancel is clear, that's including the closet space that's in that second-floor addition, even though it's not part of the office now. It's accessed by the adjacent bedrooms.
That's correct.
That's right. And then, Tony, I, sorry.
Oh, thank you. I'm done.
Okay, and Tony, we didn't mention earlier, but in terms of, we also have that remains that 22-square-foot bump out, right? At the rear of the home, in the kitchen.
Yes.
Forgot to mention that, but that remains unchanged, right?
Yes, that will stay, yes.
Okay, okay.
So, the total, I think it's about 21 square feet or 22 square feet.
Yeah, 21 and change. So, the total addition is what, Tony, including that and the, for purposes of the resolution?
The entire, entire addition is all square footage, every 3943. I'm sorry, not the, the entire addition is 496 square feet. I'm sorry, but the whole, the entire square footage of the proposed house becomes 3943.
When you say the entire addition, you mean the total added square footage is 496 square feet?
That is correct.
Thank you.
And, Tony, just to be clear, let's break that down, because I'm doing my math here. Break it down, what, the square footage for the, for the home office as...
So, we added 78 square feet to the first floor.
Okay.
And 418 square feet to the second floor.
Gotcha. And then the 21 and change for the kitchenette?
It's included, that's all included in there.
That's included in that. Okay, great. Total 496.
Yes.
Okay, great.
Just a quick question. What's the cap? What's the allowable? Was it 4,043?
The allowable, okay.
Yeah, the cap in the R30 zone is actually over 5,000.
Our table from our planner is 5,180 square feet is allowed, 3,943, if I'm correct. Mr. Condors has proposed as a result of the revision.
That's correct.
That's right. And we had referenced earlier the cap in the R20 zone for, you know, comparison purposes is 4,140. So, we're below that as well.
Thank you.
Mr. Condors and Mr. Brodsky, I believe that Elena Gabel had some questions, which included fenestration questions.
Yes.
Ms. Grue, would you like to raise those questions while we have both Mr. Brodsky and Mr. Condors available?
Sure. We've gone through the proposed changes. I gather that there was some, Elena raised that, and I think it's been clarified under our comments number six, the previous plan included incorrect information pertaining to the habitable floor arrogant calculations. But I think that we have resolved that through your testimony. So, I think we're okay with that. We do want to make sure that the, whether the elevation, particularly on some of the facades, can be, maybe additional windows could be added to the elevation where the facade has large expanses of blank walls. There may be some opportunity there to address that.
Right. Well, I did, this left-side elevation or north elevation, I guess, it changed, as you can see, because we now stepped in the second floor. So, I kind of, this facade that you're seeing here is kind of its own facade. I can't really fit any windows in there, but there is, we do have a window on this lower facade, which does meet the 4% fenestration requirements. But if, you know, we could add another window there, if you'd like, that's fine.
I think that where, in particular, we were looking is the right-side elevation and the rear elevation. I think it has to do with where the garage is. But there, yeah, there, and when you look above on the right-side elevation, also there's a blank facade there as well. Yeah, right.
Right, well, this, yeah, this is actually, we couldn't put a window here, because that's like attic space, and it's low, it's low ceiling.
How about the floor?
This down here was actually an area that we discussed at the previous application, where we're actually, we're removing a window here, because we're doing some changes inside the house. But if you look at the windows here, we do meet the 4% fenestration requirement here. So, there's, we really can't add any windows here, or we would rather not, but I can certainly add something back here in the garage if you want.
Yeah, I think that, you know, obviously, the board has to consider that, but it may make it a little bit more aesthetically pleasing if there's a window there. And could you explain the right-side elevation? What is on the first floor there and why?
Yes. Okay, so, I can explain. There was, or there is now, but we're planning on removing it. There is a French door actually coming out of that room, which leads to pretty much nothing, which is right here. And there's actually, right now, there's actually a patio there with like a paper walk. So, we're taking that out and removing the French door and putting a, like a bar, you know, a wet bar or hush on this wall built in. So, that's why we took that French door out.
Okay, so, there's no opportunity to have a window there or a window there up in that family room area?
I could consult with the homeowner very quickly to see if she's willing to do that.
Well, the board may or may not feel strongly about that one way or the other. We're just trying to address, even if you meet that technical requirement, that we try to avoid having blank walls and where you can potentially get light in, even if it's, you know, above, that provides a great benefit to everybody, including the homeowner.
Right, there is quite a bit of vegetation on that side of the house, too, so I don't, it's really not that visible. But I guess I'd let the board discuss that.
Well, it may, it may, there may be a way of doing a higher window rather than your traditional window. So, it provides an opportunity for light to come in and to make the side elevation a little more interesting. And yet, at the same time, address whatever vegetation there may be there.
Tony, did you say that built-ins are proposed for that area?
That's correct, yes.
I think we're saying in the existing sitting area, not up in the family.
Oh, you're talking about next to the fireplace?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yes.
Okay, I'm sorry. I misunderstood you, too.
I'm sorry.
Mr. Condors, could you switch to an elevation, an exterior elevation, please? You know, I think windows are a good thing if they're breaking up the design of the house. I'm not sure if they're a requirement.
Yeah, you know, I just, I just realized that there are actually already built-ins, where we're proposing or where we're discussing putting a window in that family room, there's actually built-ins there as well already.
And I think we also talk about windows, if there's a mass, a mass of a house to try to break up the mass of the house.
Right, there's a pretty good, a pretty good-sized bookshelf here right now that's next to that fireplace, so we'd have to, that would not be desirable to pull that shelf out and put a window in.
Well, can you, can you show that elevation?
Sure.
Just so we all know what that is, it's here on the right side, correct, on the first floor?
Yes, right over here.
Okay, so, what you're saying is that there are bookshelves that go all the way to the ceiling on, in both the sitting room and the family room?
Pretty much to the ceiling, yes.
In both instances?
Well, the family room, the sitting room in the front of the house, that hasn't been built yet. But the one that's existing, which is in the family room next to the fireplace, that basically goes from floor to ceiling.
Okay.
And occupies the whole wall.
Okay, so, that's existing. But the proposed, maybe there's an opportunity to put a window above a bookcase at the same time, providing a bookcase, but not going all the way to the ceiling. What's your ceiling height? Your finished ceiling height?
Those are eight-foot ceilings. I'm sorry.
I see 10?
No, no, that's the garage.
I'm sorry.
Eight-foot ceilings.
Okay, just a thought. It seems like that's a fairly significant blank wall there, so just want to raise that.
Okay, okay.
Okay, you've already addressed some of the other comments or questions that we have in our memo. I think that most of it had to do with, we just want to make sure that it will not be used as a home occupation as defined in the borough ordinances or as a temporary rental or Airbnb.
Correct.
Not from what, not from what we've heard in the testimony. I just want to confirm that.
Yes.
Yeah, it will not be used for either of those.
Okay. Okay.
And, Tony, if we could just go back a moment, you did talk about adding a window on the left side.
On the left, yeah, we could certainly add a window on the, well, we talked about adding a window in the back, which this one I can, you know, that makes sense.
Yeah.
Here, I don't know if we need one functionally, but if, and I don't know how the board feels about it, but I could add one on this wall, too, as well, if we had to.
Okay, so, that would be the left side and the rear.
Correct.
Mr. Condors, I'm sorry.
No, I was just saying, but not on the right side, which is where we were kind of, the rear elevation and the right side was where we were talking. I'm sorry, that's all I wanted to just clarify that.
Yeah.
Mr. Condors, just a couple of questions. I really appreciate how you attempted to work with the client to maximize the space, but also work within the parallelogram shape, right? So, that little triangle that shaded in, you know, really appreciate you trying to maximize, you know, limitations that you have. I do have a question. Is there a basement at all with the house?
In the main part of the house, yes.
Is it a full-size basement? And where are the stairs going into the basement on the current drawings?
They are under the main stair on the first floor.
Check, check. So, the basement, so if we're looking, I'm going to hover right where you are. Perfect. Okay, so, the existing sitting area on the right, the existing family room, that was a separate addition at a different time, correct?
Yes.
All right, cool. So, then the basement is where you have existing dining room, proposed living room, existing deck, well, that's outside, and then existing kitchenette. So, that basement there, what is it? Is it 13-block, 12-block? You know, what's the condition of the basement as far as...
Yeah, the base, it's a finished basement. It's a finished basement with a carpet and walls. It's about, it's about a seven-foot ceiling.
Okay, and in the bonus room now, what is the ceiling height in that room, sir? In the proposed bonus room on the second floor?
Oh, well, that ceiling is actually going to, we're going to try to vault that. So, it'll have various, various ceiling heights, because... Sorry.
Check, check. No, that's good enough. I'm understood. So, my one question is, and it's just, the drawing prompted it, right? As we look within the footprint, right, again, I think how you maximized the extended garage, take into account the nine-foot garage doors, right? We've had many times where cars hit, right, the functionality, I think that's great. But my question to you is, what type of variations in the drawings attempted to put the proposed office, either in their current footprint, as it is? I know it's incorrect on the drawing, right, where it says proposed office versus proposed living room?
Yes, I do.
Because if, you know, if the client has to, not the client, if your customer has to walk outside, because he's taken, right, it's very clear that with the recessed door there, there could be a door into that proposed office, and he could head outside if he need to be quiet. And what kind of variations were looked at with maximizing the finished basement already that exists?
Well, it was not the desire, it was not the wish of the homeowner to be, to have his office in the basement, trying to get, trying to get him out of the main part of the house, where the kids would be playing and things like that. So, that was one of the reasons we were trying to keep the office isolated. That, if you're referring, the other question you had about the room, that small room that was mislabeled as office, that would be too small for his home office. And it would be too connected to the house. So, that was another reason why we were trying to keep it isolated. If I understood your question correctly, I'm sorry.
No, no, you did. That's all for now. Thanks.
Mr. Condors, could you show us the plot where you see that little colored-in triangle where the variance is necessary? is necessary?
Okay, I hope I brought that in there.
No, I saw it, it was covered, it was colored in a little sort of narrow.
Yeah.
It's on the screen.
It's on there now.
Yeah, there's a little black triangle right there, very, very leathy triangle, yeah.
That little triangle, that's, is that the variance area?
Yeah, that's that's the part that's encroaching into the setback.
Okay, and have you measured how many square feet that entails? Minimal.
It's very minimal, yeah, it's very minimal, it's only about a foot and a half, at at its widest point, it's about a, you know, foot.
But I mean, how far back on the garage does it start? It looks about sixty percent of the way towards the back.
That's maybe seventy-five percent of the way back, yeah.
So what's the area of that triangle if we're doing our geometry?
Um, I don't have that offhand, but I can get it very quickly if you really want to know. Hold on a second. I just have to open up another file here. I don't, I think, uh, I don't know if you can see my screen, but I'm just going to my CAD file and and uh, just gonna give you an area there for a second.
We we still see the site plan, Tom.
Here, I'll do a different share then, I think.
No, that's fine, no, no, that's fine, I don't think.
You don't need to see the map.
Yeah, right.
It's four point three square feet of area, four point three square.
Three square feet all total.
It measures, um, it measures one foot on, one foot one on the short side and about eight feet on the long side.
And other than that, that side complies with the side yard setback.
Other than that triangle, that is correct, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
And 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 Pat, that's only the first floor, the second floor is recessed in another two, you know, another seven feet or so.
Yeah, this line right here, if you look at the site plan, that shows where the second floor is.
Well, that doesn't encroach at all.
Not even close.
Change from the original plan, yes?
Yes.
And and Mr. Condors, we talked about the reason you cannot bring that in any further is the challenges of having a garage width of twenty-one feet.
Yeah, it just, it starts getting narrow, and we were hoping that the um, the minor nature of this encroachment would 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 not be a problem to be able to get that extra foot in the garage, it would really help.
Understood, thank you.
Yeah, sorry, go ahead, Dr. Lafer, I'm good.
Yeah, if there's no further questions, um, does anyone else on the, anyone else on the board have any other questions for Mr. Condors or or Mr. Brodsky? If 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 not, um, Mr. Irene, are we ready to open this up to the public, uh, to see if there's any additional comments? Uh, and if you spoke last time, we ask that you not repeat your comments. I think if I remember correctly, Mr. Landers, uh, Ms. Lamb, Ms. Beggins and Mr. Alf Alfred Terry uh, all spoke in uh, in favor of the application. Uh, and Ms. Susan O'Brien felt that the application, if approved, the room above the garage should be deed restricted. Uh, Mr. Irene, would you just comment on what that deed restriction would look like and uh, are we ready to open this up to any additional comments from the public?
And Mr. Chairman, um, I have another question, if you don't mind.
Of course.
Whenever you would like.
Why why don't we, why don't, Mr. Chairman, why don't we allow Ms. Grule to ask her question now? So that we don't lose sight of it if we let Mr. Condors go and bring someone else up to testify, so why don't, why don't we wrap up with whatever we have with Mr. Condors at this point, so I suggest we let Ms. Grule ask her question now.
Absolutely.
And and I apologize if this has already been addressed, um, but something that was said by the architect, I just wanted to follow up, the basement, the concept of basement versus cellar. And everybody has been referring to it as a basement, if it's a basement, it's pro, it should be defined as in the habitable floor area, if it's a cellar, then it doesn't count.
It's definitely a cellar, it's not a basement.
Okay, that's all, I just wanted to make sure that because you said it was seven feet in height and it was finished, and so I just wanted to make sure that we were defining it appropriately according to the ordinance, thank you very much, I'm sorry, Mr. Chairman, to interfere with your getting to the public.
Quite all right.
So do we want to open it, Dr. Lafer, anybody who has questions for Mr. Condors at this point? Or perhaps we can ask Mr. Brodsky if he has any other witnesses, and if not, then we can open to the public for questions and comments. Mr. Brodsky, do you have any other witnesses?
Um, I I do, I do have just uh, the homeowner. Who just had a brief comment.
All right, so that being the case, Mr. Lafer, why don't we open it up to any questions for Dr. Lafer, why don't we open up for any questions for Mr. Condors at this point?
Please.
So we want to solicit any interested parties who may have questions for the architect, Mr. Condors, based on his testimony. There'll be an opportunity to comment further at the end, any questions for Mr. Condors based upon his testimony? Raise your hand. Anything, Sandy?
No, I don't see anyone.
Okay, so Dr. Lafer, shall we allow Mr. Brodsky to call his next witness?
Yes, please.
Mr. Brodsky, who do you have?
Okay, I just had, I just had Lauren Porter, who was just gonna make a brief comment uh, with regard to one of the questions that was a- asked earlier, Lauren, are you you there?
I'm gonna promote her right now.
And then we're gonna swear in, Mr. Brodsky, okay?
Sure.
Do we need to continue sharing the screen at this point?
I don't think so.
Not 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 from our perspective.
Okay, and there's Ms. Porter, and I I do believe, Ms. Porter, that you you were sworn last time, but I'm gonna swear you in out in abundance of caution, you do sorry testimony to the board, be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Just give us your full name, spell your last, your address for the record, please.
Lauren Porter, P O R T E R, at eighty-seven Lewis Lane, Fairhaven, New Jersey.
Thank you.
Thanks, uh, Lauren, uh, I know, I I I I have a feeling you wanted to address two things, one was where we were talking about those built-ins uh, which precluded the ability to uh, to put a, put a window where we were talking about, uh, we would might be a place to put one, so it was Tony correct that that that's existing built-ins that are floor-to-ceiling?
Yes, so to the right of our fireplace, um, there are existing built-ins that were there. There were built-ins there previous to our, us purchasing the home, we changed the built-ins a little bit, but those are built-ins. And then in the sitting room, there are French doors, but they open basically to mud because the next-door neighbors put in large, well, I don't know if the previous owner or the next-door neighbors, but they put in very large trees that are about the height of the house to that side, and um, I don't know if the picture is accessible, but if you're on the street or standing to the west of our house and looking to it, you can't actually see that side of our house at all. You just see the large trees, and when you look out those French doors, it just opens up to the trees and to nothing else. Um, except for, I think, we have a generator to the left, kind of behind where the chimney is. Um, so those French doors lead to nothing, so we've never opened them once in the three years that we've lived in this house.
Okay, and then the other
There's the other side on the front, if you see it, the the front elevation pictures, there's a double window and then two regular-sized windows in that sitting room already, so the one whole wall is all windows. So there's already a ton of light coming in from those, which was the other reason why we were looking to, um, the sitting room has a big open doorway that goes into the family room, and then the other side is all the windows, so we, what we don't have in this room is wall space to do something, which is why we were looking to close up those French doors.
And and the other, the other uh, point uh, was uh, Mr. La Barbera's questions about the usability of the cellar for office space, right, we've got some issues with regard to wifi and phone service down there.
Right, so. We've tried all sorts of things down there, we've had, uh, people locally know Tombo, like, he's been in here multiple times, and we currently have Eero Pro and everything, and we still, just based on the way the cellar is, and it doesn't, um, I think someone mentioned the kitchenette, it actually isn't below the kitchenette either, the cellar is just a small space below where the existing dining room and what is going to be a little sitting area going forward, it's only that small space, and it's a true cellar, and it's seven feet, and Sam is six foot four, so even the seven foot, it's like pipes and stuff, so he actually like crunches down. We have some kids' toys and storage down there now.
So if he gets excited on a phone call and jumps, he might have a problem, okay?
It's also just due to the hours that he's working, it would be uh, not suitable space.
Understood. Any questions for Lauren?
Sandy, is there anyone else in the public that would like to ask a question or be recognized?
Mr. Brodsky, is this, is this your last witness?
Yes, it is.
So Dr. Lafer, then maybe we open up to anybody who has any questions from Ms. Porter or would like to comment on the application. This would be their opportunity to make comments as well, because there are no further witnesses for Mr. Brodsky.
Thank you.
Anyone, Sandy, questions or comments, last opportunity for the public to comment. No response?
Are we, uh, are we ready for board deliberation?
Uh, you may want, you may want to, Mr. Brodsky, do you want an opportunity to sum up, or are you good?
I I think just real brief, because we we we've taken up uh, uh, enough time this evening, I think. Again, I think the board will see that the proposed revisions, um, you know, have have gone a long way toward full compliance, um, as best we could in terms of, uh, you know, meeting the homeowner's needs. Uh, we do, we just fell sh, we just fell slightly short on that setback in that small portion uh, of the first floor only. Um, and um, we fell, uh, a- a- and we we do still need that FAR at one, at point one eight three uh, where point oh, one, one five is required. But as I mentioned, uh, earlier, you know, the indish, the typical indicia of overbuilding, that is building coverage, lot coverage, um, and the caps that are, that are applicable in both the R thirty zone and for comparison purposes, the R twenty zone, we are not only below, but well below in terms of uh, uh, the proposed uh, addition and and the resulting structure. Um, the applicants didn't quite, uh, uh, aren't quite where they would have ideally liked to be, but um, you know, they're respecting the ordinance, respecting the board's input and appreciate the board's input, and believe we've, you know, we've 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 come up with with a very strong, good proposal that 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 does, that does address their needs, so for all those re, and and we talked about last time in terms of the substantiation and justification for the variances, you know, we've got the D variance, but but you know, Mr. Condors testified that the property can certainly accommodate this slight uh, exceedance over the permitted FAR ratio-wise, and falling well below the uh, the 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 cap that's applicable in 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 both zones. And we we find that, you know, that there's, there's no negative impact, and we heard that uh, from the neighbors who showed up, uh, and and spoke last time, you know, unanimously in favor, including the immediately adjacent uh, property, uh, property owner to the north uh, on the side of the property where the proposed uh, a- a- addition uh, is to be located. Um, and so in addition to that C two criteria, we talked about the C one hardship and and all of and 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 that side setback is really being uh, necessitated as a result of the very, the unusual configuration of the lot, if it was a typical uh, square lot, you know, we wouldn't have been having that conversation, so for 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 all of those reasons, we would, we would uh, ask that the board vote favorably on the application.
You had a question about the issue of the deed restriction, do you want to address that now?
Uh, can you explain to the board what the deed restriction would look like?
Well, there was, there was a suggestion last time, and I think it's 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 has merit, that if in fact the board sees fit to grant the relief, because of the the physical layout of that space above the garage, last time it appeared that the only means of access was exterior of the dwelling through the garage, maybe a little bit different now, but it's 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 similar, so the notion would be that if in fact the board sees fit to grant the relief, one of the conditions of approval would be that the app can record a deed restriction that confirms that the premises is going to remain a single-family dwelling, that that space won't be set up as a separate dwelling unit, and uh, that's why I asked about the kitchen facilities, generally, if you don't have kitchen facilities in a separate unit, you can't get a CO, so all of those would be, also the issue of it wouldn't be used as a home occupation. All those issues would be rolled into the deed restriction, just to confirm that it's gonna remain an integrated, single-family dwelling.
Mr. Brodsky, are you okay with that?
Yeah, yeah, no, no, no intention to do any of that, so no concern with that.
Brodsky, may I just jump in here for a second? Um, if they're gonna do a deed restriction, I would not, I would like it not to include a prohibition against future use as a home occupation for the bonus room, just because the ordinance speaks for itself. Under certain circumstances, I think you even have to ask the town to approve a home occupation, I can see in terms of definitely agreeing not to make it a dwelling unit, a separate dwelling unit on its own, but um, it seems like an office that would lend itself to a home occupation, I think it would be a needless restriction on future completely legal use of that addition.
Is that, is is that permitted in the zone, I I assume that Ms. Grule will raise that because it would not be permitted, just as a two-family wouldn't be permitted, maybe I misunderstood.
Well, a home occupation, from what I understand, it certainly would be able to qualify as one if the borough were available to give it some approval, I just, I'm not a big fan of deed restrictions to begin with, because I think the homeowners pay for their house, and they have what the town lets them have, and, you know, promising something in the future that limits a legal use, um, would trouble me as far as a home occupation, especially after COVID and all of that stuff.
Do we, do we know if that's permitted, I I don't recall, I thought the issue was raised by either Elena or Ms. Grule.
Yeah, they were, I think Elena just said, you know, asked them to represent that they're not gonna use it as a home occupation because they did not seek approval for that. Standing up those rules, uh, Mike, if you can correct me, is that there would be nothing prohibiting that use if they were to ask for that use, I mean, to me, it's a perfect frankly, home office for a lawyer, for example, in the future.
Well, but that that may not be permitted, though.
I think that you you ask the, you ask the borough, you say, I want to open up a, you know, let's say, for example, sole legal practice up above, in the room of above, above my garage, and then they, you go through a thing with the town, and the town, you know, there's certain rules that you can't change the outside, you can only have one person. You can only have one person who's not a member of the family that resides in the home, employed in the uh, you know, in the bit little business. I mean, it's all sort of really soft. Uh, soft stuff. You can't change the character, the residential character. I mean, I actually have looked into this uh on numerous occasions in the past. It's not a very onerous kind of standard. So uh, with that pro- with that limitation, I would not. Object to a deed restriction, but I don't think we should be making it any broader than it, than it really needs to be, just out of. You know. Respect for the p- the owner's property rights.
Well, i- if it's permitted, then I, then, then I would agree. If it's a permitted use in the zone, then I would agree that we shouldn't necessarily deed restrict it, but I, it was my. I understood that it wasn't, which is why the issue was raised.
To ask the borough for a certificate that you're allowed to do it, which I did that ten years ago. And uh, two kids ago, and the borough still hasn't gotten back to me. So when it does, um, I'll let you know what the rules are.
Well, there is a specific, if I may. And you're correct. It is an accessory use. In a residential district, it's section thirty dash seven point one seven. Excuse me, home occupations, and there are a number of, as explained, you know, quote, soft regulations. And to get uh, before you start a home occupation, you need a zoning permit from the zoning officer. Um, so uh, I understand what you're suggesting, that that not be deed restricted. Because it is not a. It is a permitted accessory use subject to those standards. At this point in time, I don't think the applicant was asking for a home occupation. Say, so that's where I think we wanted to clarify that that was not part of the application.
And I think even Mrs. O'Brien's, uh, Ms. O'Brien's comments last month, if I recall. Were more concerned about some sort of little dwelling unit going up there. Uh, because of the staircase coming in through the garage, which clearly Mr. Um. Porter is not interested in doing.
Okay, so, so if we're back to the home occupation potentially being a permitted accessory use, then I would agree miss with Ms. Quigley that you, you shouldn't necessarily deed restrict.
Correct.
Okay. So we're back to the deed restriction being integrated, single family dwelling, no separate dwelling unit, no kitchen facilities in that. Space above the garage. Yes, Mr. Brodsky, that.
That's fine. Yep.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you for clarifying that, Ms. Quigley.
Sure.
Thank you.
Mr. Irene, are we ready to open for board discussion?
I, I believe you are, Mr. Chair. We concluded with the public.
Uh, who would like to volunteer to start? Uh, Ms. Quigley, would you like to volunteer to start?
Sure. Well, I think that um, the applicant has done a very good job of addressing a lot of the issues that were raised the last time they were. Um, before the board, and especially, I would say, pulling in the second floor. Um, from the. Uh, encroachment into the side yard over the garage by decreasing the size of the office. I think it was a very imaginative. Uh, sort of reworking of the space between relocating the mudroom into that, that little hallway on the first floor. And then um, building some extra closet space into the bedrooms upstairs. Uh, I think it really addressed um, what the board had been concerned about. And uh, I think overall, it was a really, it is a really good workaround and certainly uh, the lot. The size of the lot. Can accommodate the changes sought. So I'm in favor of the application.
Mr. Ridgway?
I would agree with it quickly. Um, and and I, and I would say, um. You know, thank you to the porters and Mr. Condors for coming back to us with a plan that I think we can all easily agree to. I think it's a nice plan. It's a good plan. Um, I would, um, I like the addition of the closets in that. Office area. I think that's a little nice sound barrier. I I would agree that moving that mudroom. Um, into the interior was a good decision. Um, I, I think that the minimalist um encroachment on the um. On the, whatever the side is, the northeast corner is is minimal. Um, so yeah, I, I, I think it's a good plan and would approve.
You can, so I'm sorry to interrupt you before.
Oh, that's okay. That's okay. Um, I agree with everything that has been said. Um, I really would like to commend the porters for reworking their plan. You know, it accomplishes what they need and it's, you know, there is a minimal. Um, you know, issue, but uh, you know, like, it's minimal. Um, so I don't have a problem with anything. I would like to add, you know, with the right side windows. You know, Mrs. Porter pointed out, and from what I remember or recall. Um, that seems like a very heavily planted side of the house, so I kind of think that that is uh, you know, almost a moot point. So I don't have a problem with that either. If we could add a couple of windows uh, on the opposite side of the garage, you know, that, that's something that would be great if they could uh. Accommodate that, but you know, I totally support this with the dear, as I, you know, mentioned in the last meeting, the deed restriction, so that. Does not become a uh, a rentable unit or VRBO. Um, you know, I have no problem with this and uh, again. I think it's a great uh, a great design and a great use of the space.
Mr. Ryan?
Not a lot to add, Mr. Chairman. I think uh, my fellow board members have said everything I would say. Yeah, I appreciate Porters and Mr. Condors taking some of the comments from the last meeting to heart. And bringing back a very nice application and uh, sensitive to the ordinances. So thank you for that.
Thank you. Mr. La Barbera?
Mr. Irene, can you articulate the, the variances? And the requirements to overcome them real quick, please?
Well, you got an existing lot area and it lit, existing lot depth, so I'm essentially going to repeat what Ms. Gru outlined at the beginning. The lot area that's required in the zone is thirty thousand square feet. And the existing lot area is twenty thousand five hundred thirty nine square feet. The lot depth that's required is two hundred. The existing and proposed lot depth is one hundred sixty one point eighty three feet. I'm going to assume Mr. Brodsky can correct me that there's no meaningful opportunity to try and increase those deficiencies. Because neighboring properties are developed.
That's correct.
So that being the case, uh, with regard to those bulk deviations, that's falls what. In what we call the C one hardship criteria. Okay, as a result of the existing size of the lot, property is already developed for single family residential purposes. And based upon Mr. Brodsky's uh statement a moment ago, if there's no land reasonably available to materially mitigate or eliminate. Those deviations, you're looking at what's called classic hardship. The other bulk deviation is the side yard setback. Nineteen feet proposed, twenty feet required. That's that little triangle that Ms. Quigley was helping us focus on. And that also yields total combined side yard setback deviation, thirty nine point five feet proposed, whereas forty feet is required. That may be considered a hardship. Because of the requirement, and I don't mean to make the Appkins case in the future, these are things that we should ask the Appkins to address. But I'm simply going to outline the facts as I understand them. That the, the issue of trying to preserve a two car garage and the fact that the property lines are skewed. Generate that rather de minimis deviation. You could also fit it under what we call the C two flexible C criteria. That by allowing that slight deviation, it allows for the attached two car garage. The other item is the D variance relief. That's the habitable floor area. The Appkins proposing. Eighteen point three percent far, whereas fifteen percent far is the maximum permitted in the zone. That's uh, the Coventry Square standard. So as Mr. Brodsky outlined in his summation, the issue is whether. The project nevertheless continues to be appropriate for the site, or the shorthand phrase for that is whether the property. Can adopt, can accommodate the proposal, notwithstanding the deviation. That's the positive criteria. When we look at the negative criteria on the D variance relief under Coventry Square, there are two prongs. The first prong is no substantial detriment to the pub- public good. The second prong is no substantial impairment of the intent and purpose of the zone plan. On the no substantial detriment to the public good prong, we look at the impact, if any, of the deviation on neighboring properties. You've heard the testimony from the uh, not only the Appkin, but interested parties in the area, including an adjacent property owner. On the second prong, no substantial impairment of the intent and purpose of the zone plan. The board is required to consider whether it can reconcile granting the variance with the fact that the governing body saw fit to impose. This particular restraint or limitation on the zone. And also on the negative criteria for the bulk variances, once again, the issue is whether or not there's a substantial detriment to the public good. Or substantial impairment of the intent and purpose of the zone plan as a result of that rather de minimis deviation on the side yard setback. And total combined side yard setbacks.
Thanks, Mr. Irene. I appreciate it.
You're welcome.
And I, and I, and I, and I think there, it was a job well done. I'm really pleased with the considerations and setback. The one thing I would have liked to see is the variations in where the office could have been, given that it's a thirty five hundred square foot home. Um, and seeing what the, the give and take would have been for having the office located elsewhere. And that's why I asked the questions that I did earlier, but very much appreciate what the, the homeowners and and Mr. Condors. Did work in some magic with that setback. So all for me. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. La Barbera. You know, the uh, the house is very heavily uh treed on the right side of the, of the house in the complex. And uh, I think that really, that mitigates any, any lack of uh fenestration on that side. I think that's uh. Uh, when you look at the property, that's really very, very heavily uh landscaped and treed on that side. If no one else has any comments, uh, would somebody like to make a motion?
You're muted. I'm sorry, I thought Mr. Ryan said something.
I'll move to um, approve the Porter application as revised and submitted here tonight.
With the deed restriction?
With the limited deed restriction.
And, and what is the board, and what is the motion, or what does the board want to do with the issue of fenestration?
I think there's enough windows in that house.
Okay.
There's a lot of windows.
Lot of windows.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Sandy, roll call, please.
Ms. Quigley?
Yes.
Mr. Ridgway?
Yes.
Mr. Ryan?
Yes.
Mr. La Barbera?
Yes.
Dr. Lauffer?
Yes.
Mr. Kinsella?
Yes.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, members of the board.
Uh, congratulations to the porters, uh, a job well done by the, uh, by everyone concerned and uh, congratulations.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Have a good night, all. Thank you. Bye.
Mr. Chairman, do you want to go right into the next one, or do you want to take a five minute break?
I think a five minute break is in order.
Okay, so we'll be back in five minutes.
And, thank you.
Thank you. Nice job, Skip.
Thank you, Peter. Peter, uh, well, thank you for, thank you for the opportunity to uh, to chair that. Would you uh? Like to chair the next, the next application?
I'll do the next one, sure.
Yeah, I thought you did a great job. I think you should.
Yeah, you want to do it, be go.
I'll take baby steps here, you know, but uh, it, it was fun. It was actually uh, very enjoyable to do it and uh.
Yeah.
You know, I, I think, I think that uh, more of us that get involved in that kind of a situation, the better we're going to understand the process.
Absolutely. Appreciate it. We've been uh, I know we're going to have a little issue tonight, but thanks for stepping up. Praying for rain. I'm missing, I'm missing Mets opening day for this, so I'm hoping it rains the rest of the night.
Uh, they're, they're supposed to play in Washington. Is it, is a game that.
Yeah, well, it was supposed, it was moved from four o'clock to seven o'clock, and then they said eight twenty, but I don't know if they've started yet, and I'm. Trying to avoid my phone, so. Could be a very late night.
How'd you get to be a Mets fan?
Oh, I've been a Mets fan since uh, I went to my first game in seventy. My first Mets game.
Peter, the game has started. I will tell you no more than that.
That's fine. That's all I need to know.
Second inning.
There you go. Matter of fact, Skip. I have my nineteen sixty four World's Fair ashtray right here, so from Flushing, I'm a big Mets fan, so.
Well, you know, when I was growing up, there were no Mets.
Yeah, my dad was a Giants fan. And um, he refused to ru- root for the Mets when the Giants left, so my father and I were just anti Yankee fans, and my brother's a big Yankee fan. So my first game was old Yankee Stadium in sixty seven. And that was, I just couldn't root for the Yankees, so.
Well, you know, the Mets, the Mets got their colors from the uh, from Dodger blue and Giant orange.
Giants orange, indeed.
And uh, that's how they got their colors, but you know, growing up, you're either an American League fan or a National League fan.
Yeah.
And when the National League moved away. Here came the Mets.
That's right. A lot of people just, you know, my dad was not a happy man when, when, when the Giants left. I'll tell you that. My uncle played for the Browns in the thirties. And my father said, there's no freaking way I'm rooting for those Midwest. Cleveland Browns.
Cleveland Browns.
Saint Louis Browns back then. Ranch Ricky.
Do you have any memorabilia that was passed down or like?
I do. I have a, my, I have a glove that I used to use when I was a kid, as a matter of fact.
Wow.
And I have a bunch of bats and stuff.
That's awesome.
Yeah.
Was he a vet? Did he serve in World War One?
Oh, uh, no, both of my, my father and my uncle were both in the Second World War.
Check.
My dad was in North Africa and Italy. We ready, Sandy? Is everybody back? Mr. Irene, I think we're waiting on. And he magically appears. Mr. Nachesny, um, obviously we'll have to do a roll call, so, but just uh, for, for your consideration. Because I know Mr. Ryan, I believe, is going to be recusing himself on the next one. Do you want to do the administrative matters first? So he can.
Yeah, you know, that's not a bad idea. Then I don't want to keep Marty. Um, that's a good idea.
So just, just for your consideration, when we.
So just, just for your consideration, when we, when we do our roll call and get going again.
Yeah, let's, let's do that. Um, all right, Sandy, let's, uh, let's get back on live.
Do you want to do a roll call first then?
Yeah, roll call, please.
Okay, Mr. Nick Chesney?
Here.
Ms. Quigley?
Yeah.
Mr. Ridgway?
Here.
Mr. Ryan?
Here.
Mr. LaBarbera?
Here.
Dr. Lawfer?
Here.
And Mr. Kinsella.
Uh, here.
Thanks, Sandy. Okay, um, prior to moving on to the next application, we have a few administrative items that we just want to run through quickly. To allow our member who is recusing himself to move expeditiously. So first thing, uh, discussion, do we have any information on email addresses? Sandy, Mike, do you have you guys heard anything?
I have not heard anything further.
I don't have, I don't have anything different. No, nothing different than the last time.
Okay.
Uh, Peter, I do have a question on that.
Yeah.
As a, um, as a zoning board member, are, is the public allowed to make, uh, an Oprah request? On our?
Well, we can, we can have extended discussion about this on another time, but the purpose of trying to get board emails is to eliminate any issues with potentially rummaging through people's individual email addresses.
Gotcha. Okay.
Yeah, that's the, that's what's driving this and we're waiting on counsel for guidance at the moment, so.
Perfect. Cool. Thanks.
Okay. Um, next item is the, uh, the RFP for Board Professional Planner. Um, given that Mr. Leader is not in attendance this evening, I'm going to make a motion to carry that discussion to the next meeting, uh, the May the fifth meeting. Do I need to make a motion for that, Mike?
And roll call on the whole thing or?
It's just, you're going to take no action? You're just going to carry it tonight? Okay, yeah, we're just going to carry that, take no action.
All right. Consensus of the board? Yes, carry. Yes, thank you.
Very good. Um, approval of minutes from the March third meeting. I was not at the March third meeting, so someone will have to motion that. It was written.
I'll make a motion to approve the meetings from the, uh, March third meeting.
Second.
Uh, Ms. Quigley?
Yes.
Mr. Ridgway?
Yes.
Mr. Ryan? Mr. Ryan?
I'm sorry, yes.
Mr. LaBarbera?
Yes.
Dr. Lawfer?
Yes.
And Mr. Kinsella?
Yes.
Uh, approval of minutes from the February third executive session. I will make a motion to approve the minutes from the February third executive session.
Second.
Good second.
And Mr. Nick Chesney?
Yes.
Mr. Ridgway?
Yes.
Mr. Ryan?
Yes.
Dr. Lawfer?
Yes.
And Mr. Kinsella?
Yes.
Okay. Um, did you, in-person meeting discussion, I'm going to say we pushed that forward. I would like to have that discussion when Mr. Leader is back. We will do that again in May. Um, everybody in agreement? Yep, good. Uh, lastly, I just want to memorialize, um, there will be a, uh, the, there will be a subcommittee for the land use committee memo that, uh, was circulated by Mr. Leader. Um, a subcommittee will be made up of two members from planning and two members from zoning as well as council. I want to thank Mr., I just want to memorialize, I want to thank Mr. Law for volunteering. Mr. Law will be assisting me on this subcommittee, uh, moving forward. I think we have a call next week on the twelfth, I think, Mr. Leader sends it. So, I just wanted to put that in the minutes and thank you for, um, for doing that, Mr. Law. Doctor. Um, and we already did Feminello, uh, so I think, oh, no, that's it for, what's that? We, yeah, we did it at the beginning. We, we, oh, no, we didn't. I'm sorry. Feminello requested for time granted. Didn't we do that? Oh, no, that's the, uh, administrative, um, yes. So we received a, Mike, can you speak to that?
Yes, uh, the, the board granted Mr. Feminello certain relief, uh, including flora ratio bulk variance relief. That was approved in ma-, uh, the resolution was adopted, I believe, in May of two thousand and twenty.
Twenty-one, right?
One.
Yeah.
The, uh, ordinance provides that our, our variance relief is good for a ye-, year, Sandy, was it? Eighteen months?
I think it's a year.
It's a year. Yes, it is. Mr. Feminello sent in a letter indicating or an email indicating that his time was expiring and that as a result of COVID-related, uh, difficulties, he's been able to complete post-approval compliance review. So he has requested that the board grant him a one-year extension of his approvals. I sent around a proposed resolution for your review. If you saw fit to grant the relief, uh, generally, you know, boards will look at these things and be rather generous in the time, particularly when you have circumstances such as COVID, that's usually good cause for not being able to get things done in a timely fashion. Uh, also whether or not there's been a substantial change in the surrounding circumstances, like whether there's been a change in the zoning. Not aware of any. So barring those types of things, uh, most boards will be liberal in granting this kind of relief. It's up to you. Uh, if you decline it and he cannot pull his permits in time, then he's going to have to end up coming back before the board seeking the same relief that you granted him a year ago.
Right. Um, given the circumstances and, uh, of, of, of the need for this, I don't see an issue with granting, uh, the relief as requested. Does anybody have any comments to make on it? Any issues with it? No, I wouldn't have thought. If not, then I will make a motion to grant the relief, uh, a request for extension of time for previously granted relief to the Feminello's, uh, Hollywood.
Through, including May sixth, two thousand twenty-three?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Second.
Uh, Mr. Nick Chesney?
Yes.
Ms. Quigley?
Yes.
Mr. Ridgway?
Yes.
Mr. Ryan?
Yes.
Mr. LaBarbera?
Yes.
Dr. Lawfer?
Yes.
And Mr. Kinsella?
Yes.
And can we also just take a motion adopting that resolution, memorializing the relief you just granted, the resolution that I circulated to everybody?
Yes, I'll make a motion adopting the, the updated resolution, Mr. Irene circulated. Do we need a second and roll call for that as well, Mike?
Yes, please.
Second.
Okay. Mr. Nick Chesney?
Yes.
Ms. Quigley?
Yes.
Mr. Ridgway?
Yes.
Mr. Ryan?
Yes.
Mr. LaBarbera?
Yes.
Dr. Lawfer?
Yes.
And Mr. Kinsella?
Yes.
Mr. Nachesny, there's also under administrative items, it's, it indicates pending resolution authorizing the board contract Board Engineer two thousand twenty-two. Did we? I thought we did that last month.
I don't have that on mine, Mike.
Oh, okay. Is that, was that dropped? We did that. It's online. I don't know. Okay.
I think we approved, we approved the board engineer.
Yeah, we did it at the last two meetings ago, I think.
We did. I think you, I think you might have an older agenda, maybe the, uh, previous to the.
Okay.
Posted.
No, it's done. Okay.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. All right, moving on. Uh, Pimpanella, four thirty-five River Road.
So let the record reflect that Mr. Ryan is recusing himself. Have a nice night, Marty.
Thank you. Good night, everybody. Appreciate it.
All right, Marty.
So, Mr. Chairman, this is the Pimpanella matter, four thirty-five River Road. While we're getting set up, I'm going to swear in this gruel, so I don't forget. You just want to testify to give the board to be truth, all truth, and not but truth?
I do.
Thank you so much. And we're going to bring in Mr. Akins.
Yes, if, do you want to bring all of the applicant, um, folks in or just the attorney?
Mr. Chesney?
Yeah.
I think, I think we bring everyone in.
Okay, if you could raise your hand if you're part of that application and I'll bring you in.
What do we have? Maybe architect one.
And once we get everybody in, Mr. Nachesny, I'd suggest that we can let Mr. Akins put his appearance on his record, on the record, but I, I do believe there are a couple items of completeness that we have to address in Ms. Gable's, uh, report. So, once we get Mr. Akins on the record here. There he is.
There we go. And here we go. Great. Okay. Can yours, okay?
Akins?
Yes.
Okay, good evening, Chairman, Board Members. Mark Akins on behalf of the applicants. Michael and Kimberly, uh, Pimpanella. Also with me to my left is Jeremiah Regan, the, uh, Pimpanella's architect. So he's here, he's here at my home. Um, and Jason Fichter is our planner, uh, and the Pimpanellas are on the screen too. Good evening to you all. Can yours, okay?
Yeah, very well.
Terrific. Uh, Mr. Irene, would you, uh, kindly confirm that my notice, uh, is properly served, uh, by publication and certified mail?
I reviewed your notice materials, Mr. Akins, and as I recall, you issued new notice for tonight's meeting and your notice is absolutely adequate. I saw no issues with it. Uh, maybe we can just see, are there any interested parties in the audience that have any questions, issues, problems with regard to the notice? Not the merits of the case. Any issue or problem with regard to the notice, you could raise your hand. No response, Sandy?
No response.
Great. So the board has jurisdiction to hear and consider the matter. Mr. Akins, I don't know if you had tuned in yet, but I indicated there were some completeness items we have to address from Ms. Gable's report.
Um, sure. Do you want me to, uh, just give a brief introduction before we get into the completeness matters?
However you wish to do it.
Terrific. Why don't we, why don't we, uh, just, just indulge me with a little bit of, um, background? So this is an existing three-bedroom residence that dates to the early nineteen-thirties. Uh, you'll hear in the testimony from Mr. Regan and from Mr. Fichter that it's largely an antiquated floor plan, as one might expect with a ninety, almost a hundred-year-old house. There, there's a proposed new front porch and in addition, uh, to the rear, uh, other than the porch in the front, the addition is completely to the rear of the, of the existing structure. This is an undersized lot, um, and it's extremely deep at two hundred feet, where typically a hundred and twenty feet is required for the R fifteen zone. It's also very narrow at fifty feet, where typically a hundred feet is required for the R fifteen zone. Um, notwithstanding that, the applicants and you'll see in the materials, uh, which were recently submitted, uh, following some discussion that the team had earlier this week, but we, we've decided to reduce the, um, uh, the overall lot coverage variance to forty-five percent, um, which is very significant. So again, you heard me introduce the team. Um, why don't we go back, uh, Mr. Irene, to the completeness issues?
Very good. How do we, do you want to address them, Mr. Irene, or do we want to have Ms. Grule run through them?
Maybe Ms. Grule, since it's, it's her review letter.
Okay. Yeah, I believe, there's only a couple items, I believe.
Yeah. There are, there are three requests for waivers for, uh, submission. One is the, um, item number nine, completed Monmouth County Planning Board application. By the way, we, uh, recommend a waiver for all these, right? Um, that's number one. The other waiver is for the Freehold Soil Conservation District application. And the, uh, third one, item eleven, is the Monmouth County Health Department application. Um, as noted, we would recommend that those waivers be granted and the board, I understand, has granted waivers, uh, comparable to this previously.
So the board understands that's, those waivers are for completeness purposes. If you require any of that information during the course of proceedings, you always reserve the right to request it. Um, this, is this property on a county road, Mr. Akins?
Uh, it's on River Road, which is county highway. Yes.
Okay. Um, and freehold soil, if in fact it pertains, you'd either have to get an exemption letter or, or approval, but for purposes of completeness, so we can move to the merits, is the board willing to grant those completeness waivers so we can go on to the merits hearing?
Yeah, I'll make a motion to grant the waivers as delineated by Ms. Grule.
Second.
And Ms. Quigley?
And Mr. Nick Chesney?
Yes.
Ms. Quigley?
Yes.
Mr. Ridgway?
Yes.
Mr. LaBarbera?
Yes.
Dr. Lawfer?
Dr. Law, for your muted.
I'm sorry, yes.
And Mr. Kinsella?
Yes.
So, Mr. Akins, do you want to mark exhibits now or do you want to mark them as we go?
I think as we go.
Okay.
And I'm going to be having, uh, for the ease of, uh, uh, you know, presentation, I'm going to be having, uh, Mr. Fichter mark them, uh, Mr. Fichter present them, if that's okay.
Fine. Who would you like to, uh, swear and have sworn first?
Um, I'll, I'll have Jeremiah Regan sworn in first.
Okay. Sir, if you give us your full name, spell your last, your address to the record, please?
That's Jeremiah J. Regan, R-E-G-A-N. And my address is one forty-seven Crichton Avenue in Longbridge.
Raise your right hand. You do swear and testimony to give the board to be truth, all truth, and not but truth?
I do.
Credentials, Mr. Akins?
Uh, good evening, Mr. Regan. Do you possess any licenses from the state of New Jersey?
Yes, uh, licensed architect in the state of New Jersey, yes.
How long have you been so licensed?
Probably forty years now.
Have you given testimony before planning and zoning boards have been recognized as an art, as an expert with, in the field of architecture?
Yes.
Mr. Chairman, Mr. Irene?
Yep, I'll accept.
All right. Okay. All right, uh, Mr. Regan, I wonder if you can take a moment, orient the board to the Pimpanella residence and let's review of them, what's proposed in connection with, uh, the application this evening.
Okay, um, like was already stated, the existing house is probably about close to a hundred years old. And it has not been updated, uh, in many, many years, so, um, you probably have the original, uh, wiring in there, the original plumbing and, which is all outdated. And a lot of it doesn't even meet today's codes. So we're planning on gutting the house and rewiring and, uh, replumbing everything up to date. And we're also planning to add a front porch, open front porch across the entire front. To make it look more like a seashore community, uh, dwelling. Where the existing floor plan, first floor is very small and each use has its own room. Uh, we plan to open up the walls to make it seem bigger without actually adding any square footage to it. Um, but the original kitchen is very outdated and very small. And the, also has a small dinette area in there too, which is uh, very tiny. So we plan to uh, add on to the back um, a kitchen area, dining area, plus a mudroom pantry. Um, an, an open floor plan as well, which is, uh, very much in style of today's, um, market. And to the rear of that, a open porch for outdoor living area that would have a fireplace, dining, a barbecue. Upstairs, on the original second floor, there's three small bedrooms. Which are very small, uh, one of the bedrooms doesn't really even have what you might even consider a closet. It's a very tiny area. And we plan on adding on above the addition in the back a master bedroom suite uh, and a laundry room. So that's the extent of the addition. Now, it's all in the back. Um, we're not making the house any wider than it is right now. Um, so all the addition, well, other than the front porch addition, uh, everything is in the back, extending back into the front yard.
Tell us a little bit about the, um, materials, uh, that are existing on the house presently and what's proposed with your design.
Uh, again, the siding's very old and, uh, you know, in need of repairs, so we plan on eliminating or removing all the siding and, uh, re-sign the whole house, all new windows. And like I said before, uh, all new plumbing, electric, and and all that, all new roofing, of course. The siding is going to be a board and batten siding. Uh, the windows are going to be black and the siding white, which is now very, becoming a very popular color scheme. And to, uh, try to keep the traditional look of the house, but enhances, uh, somewhat.
Terrific.
Thank you, Mr. Regan.
Let's talk a little bit about, uh, the, and thank you, Mr. Fisher, for pulling that up. Let's talk about the rear um, and what's proposed there with the covered patio.
Mr. Akins, do you want to mark these items or do you want to mark them later? I just don't want to lose sight of them.
Sure, um, so I think, uh, the, uh, the site plan is part of the submission, uh, package, Mr. Irene. So do you want to call that A-one?
So, so this is Mr. Regan's material? So, so this is Mr. Regan's materials, right?
Yes.
So we had addition and alterations plans prepared by Jeremiah J. Regan, AIA. Three sheets, August 24, 2021. Was this the one revised through December 15, 2021, or the one that was last submitted today?
No, well, it looks like that, it looks like what Mr. Fichter is showing is the one that was revised through yesterday.
Okay, so revised through April 6, 2022?
Yes.
That's A-1?
A-1.
Okay, great, thank you.
Just to the board members, as everybody had a chance to look, I know there was revised documents that came out today, so. I don't think, Ms. Grule, I don't think you, did you have a chance to look at these? Yeah, I don't think so either. Obviously, we're doing this a little bit on the fly, so any input you would like to give would be appreciated, but just so everybody knows that these are stuff that we got today and were not reviewed by professionals.
And thank you, Mr. Chair, and again, the backdrop on that, as I mentioned briefly in my introductory comments, was that we were previously at about 47% lot coverage and we looked to take out of that rear covered patio, which is considered, you know, part of the lot coverage, obviously, about 2% to get us to 45%, and that will make sense shortly in Mr. Fichter's testimony.
Okay, good. Yeah, I'd like to do a little run-through of what were, what variances, if we could outline the variances that were actually requested here, just so we get a good concept of that.
Mr. Fichter will definitely be doing all that, yeah.
Good.
And Mr. Akins?
I'm sorry?
Yeah, I'm sorry, Mr. Akins. Just, why don't we do this? Why don't we mark Mr. Regan's plans that were revised through December 15, 2021? Let's mark those as A-1, they're part of board file. And then the revision or the revised plan that came in yesterday where you were able to reduce the lot coverage, we'll mark that A-2. How's that?
That sounds good.
Okay, I'd like to spend some time on that lot coverage number because I have some discrepancies. Higher rules initial number, I think, was 51%. And you mentioned 47, Mr. Akins, so that's why I'm a little bit, was a little confused.
So we're going to cover that with Mr. Fichter's testimony, but the difference is based upon whether there's the use of porous pavers or not.
Yeah, I have a question. You know what? While you brought it up, can I ask you a question about that? Ms. Grule, I have looked into this. Actually, I used to live in the area many years ago and I looked into using that sort of thing to reduce lot coverage in my own lot, but it was very early in when those porous pavers were coming on the market. And I received some conflicting reports, whether they would be considered pervious or impervious, you know. Is there any guidance on that? Are they now considered, you know, as good as grass, or?
I know that, that that in certain ordinances, and I don't believe it's in Fairhaven, but, and I'm going to look at that, but sometimes pervious pavers count as a percentage. And so if you use them, you can get a discount as such. I'm going to look because I'm not quite sure in this instance.
Yeah, I was just curious about it because I had some experience with it and I, at the time, I did chose not to go forward with it, but that's when I saw it, I said, is it? And I'm very thankful if it is, don't get me wrong, I just want to make sure that we're doing the right thing.
Yeah, I, I believe that it would be 100%. It would be considered to be 100% against the coverage, but I'll just confirm that as, as we're going along.
Oh, great, thank you.
Sure.
Sorry to interrupt, Mr. Akins, please carry on.
Yeah, that's okay. So I was going to go back to Mr. Regan just to say, were there any other changes between your plans of December 15th and the plans of yesterday, April 6th? No. Okay, great. So we were talking a little bit about the materials and the style. You talked about the condition of the house. Are there, oh, and we were also, so we should now mark this as A3, that's the front facade, Mr. Irene?
Is that a set? Are there a set of proposed elevations, or are these the separate renderings? So why don't, we'll do that. Why don't we mark this A-3? This is a rendering of the front elevation prepared by who, Mr. Regan?
No.
No?
Prepared by me.
Okay.
That's worse.
Okay, so that's a rendering of the front, proposed front elevation?
Yes.
Through your office? A-3, thank you.
Yeah. Okay, and then A-4 is the rear elevation colored rendering?
Very good, thank you.
Okay. Great, okay, just while we're looking at A4, you see the proposed, you know, porous pavers there and the four, in the four, four area. Okay, right, great. And a grass strip there along the driveway. Okay. So, Mr. Regan, back to you. There was some questions in the planner's letter as, as to confirmation of the attic configuration and half-story. Can you take us through that, please?
The existing attic has a ceiling height of six foot 11. And the stairway to it is what they call a winding stairway, which does not meet the building code requirement. And neither does the ceiling height getting access to the attic meet any ceiling height requirement by the building code. The area up there is very small in that six foot 11 areas. It's a rectangular area in the middle and the ceiling, which is the underside of the roof structure, slopes down fairly steeply to the outside walls. So it meets the definition of an attic, not a half-story.
So does that mean it hasn't been considered in the habitable floor area calculation?
No, was not.
What's the limit? I think, was it seven foot something, right? Habitable attic?
It has to be at seven feet to be eligible.
Seven feet.
And also? But there is a fixed staircase there, no, even though it doesn't meet code.
Excuse me?
There is a fixed staircase to the attic, right?
Yes. Well, it's very hard to get up and down it. It's winding, what they call a winding stairway.
And that's going to remain, or are you changing that?
It's going to, like to remain, so we get access to, we plan to put mechanical equipment up there. Also some storage, so.
But that won't be used for any other purpose other than mechanics?
True.
Okay.
Was, was, was the height not up to code, or was the winding staircase up to code? I was just a little confused.
Neither one meet today's requirements, code requirements.
So why would you leave the stairs that's not up to code in there?
To get access for, you know, servicing mechanical equipment. Easier access, yes.
Yep. If it's not up to code, would you consider changing?
Right.
We could, that's Mike on the.
Then, then do you run the risk of this being used, this habitable space, if you bring the staircase up to code as opposed to just?
Well, it's but the height changing the whole forefront up there. And it says there was no, there was no plan to use that, utilize that as a finished area. And it was just really just to get access for storage and utilities.
Which could be achieved via, like a pull-down, right?
Yes, good.
I'm just thinking, if it's not up to code and it's a full gut, right, you're bringing everything up, the siding, the plumbing, the electrical, this would, this appears to be, would be the only thing that would be remaining as not up to code based on the drawings. Is that a fair statement, sir?
Well, if it's access to an attic, not a finished space, there would be no code requirement for that stairway. So it doesn't have to happen, it wouldn't have to meet a code if it's just access to storage or utility service. The code would be, we have to get access to it. There's no requirement as to the size stairway or access opening.
So it would have to be made unfinished then?
Correct. We plan to do, yes.
And that's what's proposed?
Yes.
Then, given the, given the ceiling height in the attic and that ceiling height isn't going to change, I don't think we run a risk of, you know.
No, it's very. It would be, if you, if you went above seven feet, the area of that seven-foot area would be even smaller than it is now, and that would meet the code requirement.
Just to confirm, there is no, there is no area in the quote attic that is over six feet 11, correct?
Correct.
Okay.
And also in the higher rule letter, Mr. Regan, they asked for testimony with regard to the cellar is existing in the, in the dwelling?
Yes, it's an existing cellar, not a basement.
Okay. I don't know if there were any other comments in the higher rule letter for you, Mr. Regan, a number of comments on the planning side of things.
I think there's one about the height of the building. According to the ordinance, and also it's measured from the grade plane, which is the average height of the four corners of the house to the ridge. And that's how, if you look at the front elevation, I have a line there on the right-hand side there, says grade plane, 26.9. That's the average height of the four corners of the house. The grade does slope down in the back. And so the height we're proposing is 31 feet 6 inches.
Okay. Um, can you do an elevation around the side? The, the second story addition, or the new addition in the back? I'd just like to take a look at what that looks like. And I see that's the existing and the proposed is pretty boxy then. I'm just curious.
Well, it's a gable roof. Well, actually, the existing roof now is hit.
Right.
Where we plan on keeping the hip, but provide some gable ends to give it some character.
And the gable end.
The, the right side elevation proposed, is that, that blank wall space above the two small windows towards the rear? What is that? What's on the other side of that? Is that laundry room or closet? I can't remember from the.
That's a shower and a walk-in closet.
Okay.
And a laundry room. No, the laundry room has the window there, so, sorry.
Okay, I'm just trying to get a concept of what it's going to look like from the neighboring properties, given the, given the, the extreme deficiency inside yard setback that we have.
Okay. Put together a few. Thanks very much, Mr. Regan. Anymore?
I didn't have anything further for Mr. Regan, Mr. Chairman.
Can you, I did want to go back to Mr. Regan, one thing, I just, just to get my, can you go to the, the second floor plan, Mr. Fichter? Just to get my bearing straight. So you're gutting the second, you're gutting the second floor and then you're replacing those, or is just the second floor not being touched except for the addition?
The second floor is not being, it will be attached in terms of it's all plastered walls.
Right, but you're not changing the, you're not changing the existing footprint of those small, three, three small bedrooms. You're just adding the master suite. Yeah, okay, fair enough. And can you speak to those sizes? They do look pretty modest. The master bedroom is a good size, obviously, 21 by 14.
Well, that's the new, that's proposed.
Right. What are the, what are the three kind of measure out at? 10 by 12 maybe, or?
Maybe the largest one, maybe 10 by 12, and the one, the other one in the front is a little bit smaller, and of course, the one in the back is.
Yeah, that's very small.
Yes.
Okay.
But we're not planning on touching, making them any better.
Okay, thanks, Mr. Regan.
Okay, I had no further questions of Mr. Regan at this time, Mr. Chairman.
Anybody on the board, any questions for Mr. Regan? No? Anyone, members of the public have any questions of the applicant's architect? I don't see any hands, so we shall move on, Mr. Akins.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. The applicant now calls Jason Fichter, licensed professional planner and coincidentally, a licensed professional engineer. Good evening, Mr. Fichter.
Good evening.
Do you possess any licenses from the state of New Jersey?
Well, we're going to swear him in first. If you give us your full name, spell your last, your address to the record?
Jason Fichter, F-I-C-H-T-E-R, Insight Engineering, 1955 Route 34 in Wall.
Raise your hand. Do you swear a testimony to give the board a bit of truth, all truth enough but the truth?
I do.
Thank you.
Sure.
Thank you, Mr. Irene. Mr. Fichter, do you possess any licenses from the state of New Jersey?
Yes, licensed professional engineer and licensed professional planner in the state of New Jersey.
And you've given testimony before this board on many occasions, correct?
I have, in both capacities.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, I'm all good with that.
Thank you very much. All right, Mr. Fichter, you're familiar with the site. Tell us a little bit about the existing conditions and then we'll get into some of the particulars of the planning testimony.
Sure. Before I get started, would you like to mark the exhibit that I have up on the screen right now?
I think we'd be at exhibit A5 if memory serves me right.
Yep, this is aerial exhibit, should be today's date. Yep, today's date. Or 7/22. This is a, an aerial photograph we took from the, from the county. We were able to take their tax map lines and overlay them on the map. And we labeled, labeled all blocks that are shown on the exhibit and we labeled all lots that are within 200 feet of the site, and the site obviously is in the center of the exhibit. And you'll notice the orangish color on the front and back of the house that represents the proposed porch in the front and the proposed addition and patio in the rear. And of course, we show the 200-foot radius around the site just for perspective. So as I go through my testimony, that exhibit, I think, might be helpful to just kind of get a feel for the area. So again, this is block 22 lot 8, otherwise known as 435 River Road. It's important to note that River Road is a county road. It's County Route 10. We are in the R-15 single-family residential zone and that zone requires 15,000 square foot lots. Our lot is only 10,198 square feet. This property is improved with a two-and-a-half-story, single-family home and a detached garage. You will notice the garage on, on the plot plan, but you can't see it in the aerial because of the tree cover. This property is located in a single-family neighborhood. River Road happens to be the zone boundary that separates the applicant's property from the R5 zone, which requires 5,000 square foot lots at 50 feet wide. So the applicant is here seeking approval to construct this two-and-a-half-story addition to the home. Currently, as you heard Mr. Regan explain, the home exists with three bedrooms and one and a half bath. And when you look at those metrics, we're really only proposing to add a full bath. The proposed renovations also provide a more modern living area, not the least of which is the kitchen, which I know is a major consideration in this plan, since it's way below current standards. So we, we touched on these in Mr. Regan's testimony, but I just, for good housekeeping, I just want to kind of highlight them here. There was a couple of questions that were in the planning review. The first is that the existing and proposed home is in fact two-and-a-half stories by ordinance definition. Also that we have a cellar, not a basement. And therefore, it's not included in the habitable floor area. And the attic is not habitable and therefore, that's also not included in the habitable floor area. And the trigger for that is that the ceiling height is under seven feet. So with those points of clarification, I'll hop right into the variances. Really, there's, there's two variances that we're requesting. There's a couple, couple others. But I'll go through them all here for you in detail. The first one is, is known as a D4 variance. This is a floor area ratio, or as it's referred to in Fairhaven, the habitable floor area ratio. This zone permits up to point 2. And what exists today is point 1.7 and what we're proposing is point 2.7. Now, if the applicant's lot conforms to the ordinance lot area of 15,000 square feet, what we're proposing would comply for habitable floor area ratio at point 183. That's below what's permitted. Now, the borough has three layers of control for size of residential homes and that's quite uncommon. The first is habitable floor area ratio, the second is building coverage, and the third is maximum habitable floor area. Building coverage is the most common zoning control and it typically gets the job done in conjunction with the other bulk standards like setback and height and so on. We comply with building coverage, uh, since we're below the maximum permitted at twenty-four point six four percent where thirty percent is permitted. Maximum floor area is the second or redundant level of control used by some municipalities, including Fairhaven. The, uh, this zone permits three thousand four hundred fifty square feet for a home. We're only proposing two thousand seven hundred fifty square feet. So that's seven hundred square feet less than what's permitted, well below that standard, so we would comply here as well. Floor area ratio is typically used for non-residential and multifamily residential buildings. It's not typical to be used for single-family homes and this is where we're requesting relief. It's driven by our undersized lot area, which is only two-thirds of what the ordinance calls for. Our lot area is consistent with the R ten A and R ten B zones. They each require ten thousand square foot lots. Again, we have ten thousand one hundred ninety-eight square feet. Both of those zones permit a habitable floor area ratio up to point two eight, which we also comply with. Now, the reason the master plan ordinance employ these redundant controls is to prevent the proliferation of what it refers to as monster homes, and that was a result of um, development patterns that were, uh, coming along in the nineties and then again in the two thousands. So, we're proposing a home that's two thousand seven hundred fifty square feet. I would not consider that a monster home, so I, I believe we are consistent with the spirit of the master plan and the ordinance. The next variance that we're requesting is for lot coverage. And I believe that this can be supported under both the C one hardship and the flexible C two criteria. So lot coverage in this zone is permitted up to thirty-five percent. What exists today is forty-four point three nine percent. And we're proposing forty-five percent. Essentially the same as what's today, pretty darn close. Uh, it's sixty-two square feet over the existing condition, uh, to be exact, in terms of lot coverage. Now, we were able to achieve the forty-five percent lot coverage by using some smart design techniques. Uh, notably, I'm gonna go back to the rear.
Hey, Jason, real quick, just some of those lot coverage numbers. I'm looking at the, uh, plan revision, but again, we have the one from fifteen twelve. Is, is on the other, on the updated plans, are those updated figures? Cause I'm seeing a slight just discrepancies in the percentages. Just scroll all the way to the, the zoning data. Okay, so this is all. Okay, check, check, got it.
Okay, yeah. All right, so, um, let's see, looking at the rear. So we're talking about the, uh, smart design techniques that we use to get the lot coverage down. Um, or, or keep it the same while expanding, um, at putting this addition on. So the first thing that we're doing is we're proposing tire ribbons, which allows to have pervious area in the middle. Uh, this is particularly okay in this case because a car will never drive on that grass, because if it did, it's either gonna hit the house or run over the fence. So this area here will remain uncompacted. The ordinance definition for impervious is that uh, the surface of the ground is compacted so hard that it prevents the infiltration of water. That could be accomplished by, uh, vehicles driving on it, so that will not occur. Uh, the other thing that we're proposing is this, uh, pervious, partially pervious area in front of the garage. If I go back to uh, the plot plan, you're gonna see this hatched area between the house and the garage. Um, that's the driveway area there and you could see the note. The idea is to propose two by two concrete paver pads with grass strips. So if I zoom way in here, what you're gonna notice is these larger squares are the two by two paver pads. And these narrower strips in between are pervious. So again, a vehicle is gonna drive on these two by two pads, leaving the middle part, uh, uncompressed, so to speak. Uh, and that is how we're able to get uh, to keep this impervious, uh, number essentially to the existing condition, even with this small addition to the rear of the home. Now, one significant challenge or hardship, and this is where the C one criteria comes into play, uh, that we face with lot coverage is the extraordinary depth of our lot. Our lot is two hundred feet deep. And the ordinance contemplated a lot depth of only a hundred and twenty feet for the R fifteen zone. We're also challenged with the fact that the existing detached garage is located at the rear of the lot. And what those two things mean is that we're gonna have a very long driveway. And on top of that, here's where the county road comes into play. That means we have to have a vehicle turnaround area on the property so that when a vehicle exits, it exits, uh, headfirst. That's a county requirement. So if you, you add all that up, what ends up happening is we have a driveway coverage in and of itself of twenty-three point four percent. That would only leave eleven point six percent lot coverage for the home. And that doesn't count walkways, patios, or other ancillary improvements. Now, it's impossible for ordinances to be written for every scenario in a municipality, and that's why the municipal land use law allows for variance relief. For example, the bulk limitations of the R fifteen were created with the assumption that lots will be at least fifteen thousand square feet. And this assumption puts constraints on the applicant's lot, which is only ten thousand one hundred ninety-eight square feet. So I took a look at the R ten B zone, since the required lot area is similar to the applicant's lot. It kind of gives us a view into how the ordinance was created at that lot size. The R ten B zone permits up to forty-five percent lot coverage. And then considering these smart design techniques, we use the tire ribbons and, and the pervious area with the paver, um, paver, uh, two by two paper areas. Um, and we also, uh, as you know, uh, as of yesterday, we submitted revised plans to reduce the size of the porch in the rear and the exhibit that I'm showing you here reflects that change. So the, the solid area is the two-story addition, which is unchanged from the original submission. This dotted area here represents that covered patio, which is changed from the initial submission. So when considering all of those things together, uh, we would comply in the R ten B zone at forty-five percent lot coverage, and that's the target we're shooting for. And also recall that we're only sixty-two square feet over the existing lot coverage, and that's another significant consideration. So next I, I, what I do is I evaluate the intent of the lot coverage limitation, and it's really about two things. It's always about two things. It's aesthetics and it's runoff. So for aesthetics, the architectural design is beautiful, uh, the pavers for the driveway is also beautiful. This is as opposed to proposing a large concrete pad, for example, in industrial area or on the fringe of a residential area. So for us, aesthetics aren't an issue. We, we have a very attractive proposal for this property. For runoff, we have the ability, it's not shown on the plans, uh, but we do have the ability to capture roof runoff and send it to a dry well. We have to confirm the soils, but from what we know of the area, the soils are gonna be agreeable. Um, and there's more than enough roof area to make lot coverage essentially compliant. And that, uh, addresses runoff to be within the limits intended by the ordinance. So again, we feel that we're consistent with the spirit of the master plan and ordinance for lot coverage. Now, um, another variance, uh, we, we have two more variances that we're requesting and they kind of go hand in hand. One is for the single side side yard. Let me go to plot plan. We're referring to, uh, the right side of the property as viewed from the road. Um, twelve feet, or actually the, uh, left side, twelve feet is required. And we have three point four feet on the west side and we have nine point one feet on the east side. Those are existing conditions. Except that the two-story addition in the rear yard exacerbates the condition on the east side. Because it's following the existing building line. We're not getting any closer to the side property line. We're just proposing an addition within that area. And the reason it's within that area is because it has to tie in with the flow of the existing home, which is uh, modest in width, so there's not much leniency there.
But the other variant, what's the, excuse me, what's the dimension of the, um, the short side to the house at the addition, not the three, not the three feet?
Let's see if I can measure that. Um, let's see, sometimes this works and sometimes it doesn't. Let's find out. We'll check one that's labeled. Look at that, it works. Great. All right, so I'll give you, I'm gonna zoom in to make it as accurate as I can. It's not exact. You're looking for this distance here?
Yeah, I'm just curious how far that is because that's the side that concerns me more because that's the three-foot side, so.
So the, the, uh, combined, uh, let's see, the single side side yard uh, requirement for the zone is twelve feet, so we have that plus a little bit.
Okay. That's exactly what I was looking for, thank you.
Yep. Okay. All right. So, uh, the other, the other variance that we're requesting, which I also believe falls under the C one hardship criteria, is the combined side yards. It, it's basically a descendant of the other one we just talked about. The combined side yards required are thirty feet. And, uh, we are twelve and a half feet existing and we're not proposing to change that, but again, this is the same spot where the addition exacerbates that on the east side. The hardship we face here is making the addition work within the flow of the existing home. And, uh, this is consistent with the master plan, since we're proposing to renovate the existing home rather than to knock it down and build new, which is, uh, trumpeted many times throughout your master plan. We face another hardship here, which is that, you know, if we analyze the what-ifs, the, the lot is only fifty feet wide where the zone contemplates a lot at least a hundred feet wide. So when you apply the thirty-foot combined setback to our yard, uh, for undersized for width, you only get a twenty-foot section where you can build the home, and that's not consistent with what the R fifteen zone is looking for. And then we have, uh, a few existing non-conformities that are not changed by this application. They are, of course, lot area, lot frontage and width. And then the accessory building, which you can only see on the plot plan, the detached garage in the rear, uh, the rear yard and side yard setbacks do not comply. No changes are proposed there, uh, they would remain. So in support of those variances, I took a look to see what purposes of planning would be advanced if this application was to be approved. The first one is, I believe this is an appropriate use and development, which promotes the general welfare. So as Mr. Akins alluded to, the average age of homes in the immediate neighborhood, referring to the two hundred foot radius, that is, the average age is ninety-five years old of those homes. The applicant's proposing to provide a modern home, consistent with your master plan, which is to renovate the existing home without knocking it down. As a result, the home becomes more valuable, which is a benefit that's enjoyed by the entire neighborhood and the borough as a whole. And this would advance the general welfare. We're also securing safety from fire, flood, panic, and other natural and man-made disasters. So the applicant described to me, uh, the evaluation of the home during the planning stages of designing the improvements, when they were evaluating what to do and how to do it. He described the electrical system as being in dire need of replacement, same for the plumbing. Uh, the roof needed to be replaced a- and basically overall, the house is just subject to deferred maintenance. So the architect's design includes replacing and upgrading all of these systems, and that will make the home safer uh, and built to the most current safety codes. Sorry about that. You know, let's go back here. Okay. We're also providing adequate light air and open space. Uh, the proposed addition is to the rear of the existing home, which is a very significant consideration. That puts it behind the existing home. Um, on adjacent lot seven to the east, which is to the right as you look at this exhibit. And along the side of the existing home, uh, on lot nine to the west. Part of the rear yard addition is an open porch. Again, that's the hatched area. I'll zoom in a little more. It's only covered with a roof and it's only one story. In other words, it's essentially wide open. And if I go to that rear view again, you could see there how it's, it's wide open. The building height, the stories, the building coverage, the habitable floor area, the front yard, the rear yard, these are all compliant. So therefore, the light air and open space is protected by this application. We're promoting a desirable visual environment. So the architectural plan exceedingly achieves this purpose of planning, certainly in my opinion. The design of the renovated home is beautiful, so I, I believe we do advance this purpose of planning a, a great deal. And lastly, I believe that we're conserving property values in the neighborhood. So as I mentioned earlier, the proposed renovation makes the home more valuable, which is a benefit that's again enjoyed by the entire neighborhood and the borough as a whole. In terms of the negatives, the, uh, use remains a permitted use and, and as obvious as that may seem, we can never undervalue that. The size of the proposed renovated home doesn't exceed what's called for in the ordinance for a conforming lot. The R fifteen zone actually seeks larger homes than what we're proposing. Aside from the proposed front porch, the size of the home will not change as viewed from the street. The lot coverage variance is mitigated by, again, the exceptional aesthetics and the runoff controls that we're proposing. Your master plan aims to avoid what it calls monster homes. And again, we're not proposing a monster home, but rather a modest two thousand seven hundred fifty square foot home, very in keeping with the neighborhood. Your master plan discourages knockdowns. This is a renovation, so we meet this purpose. Your master plan encourages maintaining the character of neighborhoods. This is a beautiful renovation that's consistent with the architectural appeal, appeal of Fairhaven and this neighborhood in particular. Your two thousand five master plan reexamination encourages the borough to, quote, protect and enhance the small town and historic character of the borough and the desirable residential qualities of its neighborhoods. We meet this goal, especially because the addition is in the rear yard. The only change to the streetscape is a nice front porch. The intensity of development along River Road would remain visually unchanged by this application, since the small addition is to the rear. The master plan also states, and, and this is a long quote, but I think it's, it's worth putting out there, quote, "The intensification of development in the borough's neighborhoods would result in increasingly large building expansions and large infill dwellings that would be out of scale, oversized, and out of character with the borough neighborhoods." "The resulting impact would be to the detriment of the visual environment of the community and deprive residents of the privacy and the quality of neighborhood light, air, and open space that the borough enjoys." "The borough further desired to maintain neighborhood character and a, a varied housing stock affordable to all income groups," end quote. "This intent of the master plan and ordinance is met by this application. It's not an infill development." "The master plan seeks to prevent monster homes that would be out of character with the borough neighborhoods, and this home is by no means a, a monster home." "And the architectural design is consistent with the character of the borough's neighborhood. So with all of those considerations in mind, I would say that if the application was approved, it would not cause a substantial detriment to the public good and would not substantially impair the intent and purpose of the zone plan." And of course, as you consider the negative criteria, I always like to highlight that word's substantial. You're not looking to see if approving this application would cause a detriment to the public or an impairment to your zone plan. You're looking to see if it would cause a substantial detriment or a substantial impairment. And I don't believe this application rises to the level of substantial in either case. And on balance, it's my opinion, opinion that the benefits of this application substantially outweigh its detriments, giving you the ability to approve this application with confidence. That's all I have, Mark. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Fister. Mr. Chairman, no further questions of Mr. Fister at this time.
Thank you, Mr. Akins. I do have a question. Mr. Irene, um, and, and Mr. Fisher, I agree with you on the, on the zoning, um, uh, if you look at all the other houses on that side of the street, everything is fifty-foot frontage, which really doesn't make a lot of sense to me, um, because there is not one house there that has a hundred foot or of, of frontage on it, and so why is it R fifteen? I'm not quite sure. But, uh, Mr. Irene, the, the upzoning, I know we talk about this all the time, where you can look to the next zone higher, uh, two things. It's only the next zone, or is it any zone above? Uh, I thought. And the, the wording is ambiguous, that's why I ask.
I thought it was the next zone above, but we can certainly focus in on the language of the ordinance if you like.
Yeah, cause I'm looking at this table, see, it's lot width and lot depth compliant with a zone above the zone. Yeah, cuz I'm looking at this table C, it's lot width and lot depth compliant with a zone above the zone. So, uh, and the reason I highlight that is because yes, it, it looks more like an R5 lot. We know that with, with regard to the frontage, but unfortunately the R10 has 100 foot minimum with, uh, you know, frontage. And that is one of the specifics is that, uh, existing residential lot contains a lot area, lot width and lot depth compliant. And the lot width kills us on that. Otherwise, you know, you, we would be looking at a very different set of, of, um, of variances here. And I'm just trying to figure out if you can, how, how you mitigate, you know, how you digest that.
I thought it, uh, consideration at one time in the past, it was A-zone above, meaning the zone above, but I.
So you can only go to a 10A then, right?
Uh, that's what I thought. The board determined it was red ass.
Okay. Yeah, unfortunately that, then you still, unfortunately, Mr. Fisher, if we, if we use that spirit of the law, and I do agree with you, but then we're still out on, we're about 5% on our maximum look, cuz R10 is 40%, where you're at 45. And, uh, although the 28, the, uh, the, it does mitigate the D variance. Um, I mean, for my, but I, I don't, I had a couple of questions that you covered. Um, I am glad that that one side is on the, is, is a 12 foot setback. I, the, your, your gold, uh, yellow illustration there makes it look like it's just extends the. You see what I'm saying? It just looks like it extends the line of the house, so it maintains that. But it actually isn't. It's set back somewhat, is it not?
Yeah, that's correct. If, if we go to the plot plan, you, you see it more precisely. The, uh, the aerial photo that, that you're looking at here, when, when you grab it online, it's, it's intended to be looked at like this. But when you, when you have the benefit of a computer and you do this, you see how pixelated it gets here. So you can't get appreciation for that setback, so that's where we go over here and, and we can see that setback.
So that's probably a eight feet or so setback from the side?
Um. I think.
Eight and a half feet, right? Okay.
Closer to nine, yeah.
Good. So, um, that was the only question I had for you, Mr. Fisher. It was very good. Thank you. Very, excellent thorough presentation.
Um, thank you.
Does anybody have questions for Mr. Fisher? Any members of the public, uh, have any questions of, of the applicant's engineer?
And planner.
And planner.
Going back to the, um, the plan, are those air conditioning compressors on the side of the addition?
Yes. Are they existing?
There, they'll be new, I assume.
Well, they'll be new, yes, they're new.
Are there any there now?
There's one there now, I think. Let me look at the, um.
You're zooming in.
I'm just trying to think where they would hit the next door neighbor since it is such a narrow lot, um.
Oh.
I don't know what the rule.
I'm figuring they'll be 10 feet from the line, probably.
Yes.
Nine. But, but they're not existing there now, Mr. Regan? Is there nothing there now?
True.
Okay. Mike, do we need, do we need to, to give relief for that, given that they would be within the single side yard?
May, may interrupt, the, the, the survey does show one existing AC unit in the notch there.
Okay, so, so we're just adding a second one. So that's an exacerbation.
So the question. So the question is, what's a required setback for the mechanicals?
Correct.
So who knows?
To my knowledge, they've got to be within the side your setback, um, but given that the side your setback is deficient, do we have to grant relief for a second air conditioning unit?
If, if they, if, if they don't conform, then I would suggest you do that because otherwise someone's liable to kick it back if the resolution doesn't call that out.
Yep. So if the board sees fit to grant relief, we would make it part of the resolution that the, that the AC units, uh, the additional AC unit in, into the existing one is covered then. So let's just make a note of that.
Do we have the setbacks for those?
I do not.
So the existing unit is shown on the survey. Uh, this is, um, this is a 20 scale. Yeah, we got here, um, we're gonna scale it off, Mr. Irene.
Well.
Okay.
That part's really not, so it's.
Thank you, Mr. Regan.
Yeah, but I'm just gonna show the existing, existing setback.
They're probably, the setback would be, probably be about nine feet to the AC units.
Okay. Is there? So the initial, the existing one is deficient now, so then we can.
Is there a requirement that the mechanicals be screened?
I don't think there is.
Yeah.
Actually, the existing, the, um, yeah, the minimum one side is 12 feet. So we're deficient anyway.
Screening it if the board saw fit, that would not be an issue.
Is just any curiosity, did, do the homeowners, uh, intend to put like a, a whole house generator in as well?
It's not proposed.
So to mitigate any adverse impact from the deficient setback of the air conditioning units, does the, would the board require there be some sort of screening?
Such as a fence or a?
Yeah, so, some ordinance is called for some sort of lattice or, or a solid evergreen hedge or something to shield visually and also to try and mitigate a little bit the sound. I don't know if that's an issue or not. I don't know what, what our ordinance calls for. That's why I asked for if there's a requirement to screen.
I don't think there is a, I don't think there is any requirement. I think it's something that we have asked for in the past for certain. I remember doing a generator years ago where we asked for screening, uh, evergreen screening. I don't recall ever doing it for air conditioning, especially for an existing one. Is there any fence on that side between the, 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 the two properties at the moment?
I don't know which one. Yes, there is.
Yes, there is an existing wood fence in that area, Mr. Chairman. That's picked out of the survey as well.
Is that the applicants or the neighbors?
Uh, it's right on the line, Mr. Irene.
Oh, sure, maybe somebody's.
Can we bring that home in? Do they, do Mr.? I know they haven't been sworn in, but.
It appears to be the, um, the applicants, cuz this, this line right here is part of the fence. And then you could see it comes out of the property line back here and then it's on the back line here, so it does appear to be theirs.
Okay, so there is a current screening there now.
Yes.
Okay.
Do we have the height of the fence?
Hmm.
We could, the, uh, the applicants are on the call, uh, Mr. Chairman, we could swear them in to get that question answered. I'm sure they know the answer.
Well, the, the only reason I ask is the, the rendering showed an open fence. So I don't know if it's the same kind of fence or is it board on board or what it is. Do that? That.
Yeah, I think they're just conceptual, I don't.
Well, the rendering doesn't show offense.
There it is.
That's, that's on the other side.
No, no, I understand that. I'm simply saying if that mirrors the fence on the, on the, on the west side, then that's not gonna be much of a screen.
Right, um, we, we certainly could work, we could, we could, uh, depict the existing condition and if it need to be supplemented, we could stipulate that we'd work with the board's planner in that regard, Mr. Chairman, Mr. Irene.
Alright, so if the board saw fit to grant that relief, the condition would be subject to the applicant screening it to reasonable satisfaction of the board's planner.
Yes.
Thank you.
We'd, we'd stipulate as to that.
Thank you.
I wouldn't mind hearing from the applicants, you know, they may be able to stop listening, say, oh yeah, this is what the fence looks like, you know? It could be a stockade fence right now, who knows?
Mr. Pimpenella, are you there? Can you unmute yourself?
Hi, yes, I'm here.
Alright, Mr. Pim.
You wanna swear him in?
Yeah, would you give us your full name and spell your last, sir?
Sure, Michael Pimpenella. P-I-M-P-I-N-E-L-L-A, 435 River Road.
And if you'd raise your right hand, sir, I'm gonna swear. And you do swear in testimony to the board, it'll be the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Thank you.
Tell us a little bit about the fence.
That's, well, if you can call it a fence, unfortunately, it's a, it's a, I would say like, uh, you know, what you would typically see around, uh, you know, uh, farms, you know.
Chicken wire?
That's close to it. It's, it's kind of dilapidated and, uh, uh, wood, um, that pretty much.
Is it like a, a post and rail?
Posted a couple of rails.
Okay.
Yeah.
Is that your fence, Mr. Pimpenella?
No, that's proposed.
No, is it, it doesn't belong to you, the current one, or is it your neighbors?
You know what, I, I couldn't tell you, but I, I could tell you a little bit about the plans. The plan is to, I mean, uh, obviously the condition, if, if you looked at the photos, uh, and there are, uh, photos on, uh, uh, application of the fence. It's, uh, pretty dilapidated, so there is plans to replace those. Um, you know, we're in conjunction, uh, with the neighbors if they saw fit, uh, to, uh, say, Mike, uh, you know, we like this fence, uh, go ahead and you can put it in. Um, we will propose a fence, um, just to get things up to speed. I have small children. Um, you know, so definitely, uh, having big ga- gaps in the, in the fence line. Um, uh, it's not doing us any justice. Um, we're also gonna propose landscaping as far as, you know, hedges and, and things of that nature.
Yeah, that was gonna be our next question, was, uh, any proposed changes in landscaping to the.
Yeah, I mean, I mean, uh, uh, existing, I mean, you know, the house has been really deferred to maintenance, um, you know, uh, uh, you know, the, the previous old owners were elderly and, uh, you know, just didn't really keep up the properly, um. So everything is pretty much gonna be revamped, um, into, you know, the fashion, um, of, that we're proposing of the home. So of course, the landscaping and fencing, uh, are gonna be in that, uh, same taste.
Good, thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else have questions of the applicants? While we have them on?
Chairman. Mr. Chairman, if I may. Um, you asked a question earlier on about lot coverage and what was included in this pervious coverage, included or not, and, and, um, I'd just like to clarify as much as I, um, would compliment the applicant's planner, engineer on his testimony and a lot of his creative thoughts of how to address coverage. Uh, technically, under the ordinance, your ordinance lot coverage includes those areas whether covered by impervious or pervious material. So I just technically, it appears as though what they're proposing would be included. Although, again, I would note that, you know, I think that these are creative mitigating considerations on the, uh, on the board's part. So I just wanted to note that.
Thank you, Miss Gruhl.
So. And to balance that, um, what, what, we have those two by two paver areas, those are included as impervious in the calculation. It's the strips between them where we were able to capture that pervious area. So I think we might have been able to capture the best of both worlds there.
So you're saying, I'm sorry, go ahead, Ms. Gruhl.
I'm sorry, Mr. Chairman, I just wanted to check back the, the, what's called the, what the waffle or whatever the, that back part, which I'm not thrilled. I never liked that particularly, but it does, it does mitigate. But was that included or how was that calculated, Jason, in that?
Yeah, so, so what we did is these tire strips are impervious. Right, so this area in the middle here is what's pervious. This waffle area that, or whatever you wanna call it, that you're talking about here. Each, each of these boxes is a two by two paver area that supports the vehicles. Those were calculated as impervious. It's the spaces between them that's counted as pervious.
Okay. That's.
Yes.
Thank you. That's where our.
But that. But if we recalculate it under the ordinance, don't I need the outer limits of that entire area?
In my opinion, no, because the vehicle, your ordinance talks about lot coverage and where vehicles are driving. And whether it's pervious or impervious, it's considered impervious. That's really, uh, geared towards a, a consistent surface like gravel. And that's, that's a common interpretation, unfortunately, but it is. In this case, we have the impervious surface that supports the vehicle. It's the space between those two by two areas that remains pervious and unaffected by the vehicles.
I, I don't, I don't think that's the ordinance, the way Ms. Gruhl just read it. So if we look at the lot coverage definition.
Mm-hmm.
It says the area of a lot covered by buildings and structures. And really, the ordinance should stop there. It shouldn't get into impervious or pervious. It, it should simply deal with structures, but let's read it. The area of a lot covered by buildings and structures and accessory buildings or structures. And that language is superfluous. But the area of a lot covered by buildings and structures and accessory buildings or structures and expressed as a percentage of the total lot area. Here it. And it should have just stopped there, but it goes on. For the purpose of these regulations, total lot coverage shall include all other impervious surfaces and all parking areas and automobile access driveways and internal roadways, whether covered by an impervious or pervious material.
So the fact that you drive on it, just because you can drive it, what if it was grass, Mike? Um, could you call it, call it impervious even just because I'm driving on it?
I'm, I'm simply reading the language, Mr. McChesney. I think if they, it, it's, in my humble opinion.
Yeah, I don't.
One should not get into impervious or pervious. One should simply deal with structures, the way they're defined in municipal land use law.
Right, right.
But it sounds like you take the outer bounds of the driving and parking area. You do the math and whatever it comes out to be, that's, I think, the, the coverage now. I, I'll defer to Ms. Gruhl, she's the planner, but I think the language, as she read it and I read it, seems to be pretty clear. You don't get to skip over the interior space, I don't think.
Uh, I, I think that Mr. Irene is, is correct. This, uh, there's a lot of, there's a lot of vagueness or there's a lot of redundancy in that, in this lot coverage definition. It makes it even more confusing because of this. I, um, I I'm afraid that I could argue either way, but I think that, I'm, I, I think that, uh, Mr. Irene's, um, definition or interpretation I would probably go with in that instance, so that it's what measured from the outer part of that. Um, however, I think it is a creative and a good way of addressing lot coverage. Um, whether technically it, uh, it may still be calculated in the lot coverage. Um, it is a good alternative.
I don't, I don't, I don't disagree. That's why I'm, I'm suggesting that it may be appropriate to work the calculations that way. And of course, the board is free to consider the testimony of Mr. Fisher, where he talked about mitigation, both in terms of the aesthetic impact and also in terms of the drainage impact as a result of the creative features that have been used. If the board sees fit to grant the veriture relief for the number. Just my suggestion, but I, but I, but I think if you read the ordinance, it seems that you have to include that in the calculation. And then based upon what's being proposed in Mr. Fisher's testimony, you may wish to consider whether it, the proposal and the creative features mitigate any adverse impact, both in terms of the aesthetics and in terms of the drainage features.
I gotta tell you, that's a terribly written ordinance, because the, the way that ordinance is written, um, you could remove your whole driveway and plant grass there, but just by, given by the fact that you're driving on it, it's considered impervious coverage.
Well, you have to make a note of that, Mr. McChesney, for your.
I definitely will. Thank you, Mrs. Good. I, I actually did write that.
Here's, and, and Mr. McChesney, here, here's just a perfect example where you get into problems and people start talking about impervious, impervious. Is, is a, is a slotted deck impervious? No, it's, I think most people would agree, it, the water can perk through the deck and into the ground below. So would you allow someone to install a slotted deck over their entire property and say it doesn't count for coverage?
I agree with you.
So, in any event, I, I, just a suggestion, it's up to the board how you wanna proceed.
It does also bring up, which is really a little bit off the point, but in terms of our ordinance in Fair Haven, it does bring up, um, the difficulties of. ordinance in Fairhaven, it does bring up, um, the difficulties of taking words that have universally accepted meanings and then just for the purpose of our ordinance saying, it means something else, because I think that it goes against most people's interpretation of this, uh, combination grass and paver pads to see that as impervious. But the, uh, the folks who have given us a lot of these problematic provisions seem to think they can just solve problems by calling words, you know, defining words the opposite of what they are and say, this is the Fairhaven rule and this is how we're going to apply it. And we see it come up in many different, uh, contexts with our ordinance. Anyway.
And, and you, and you're absolutely.
But I did have a question for Ms. Grue. If you know, um, that fifty-one point six-two percent on the planning letter from Higher Group, was considering the, um, the paver pads with the grass strip as, as, as lot coverage?
I can clarify that for you, if you like, the. Yeah, the, the revised plans that were submitted yesterday, uh, oh, I have it up on the screen. I don't have to explain where it is. I could show you. Hold on. See the bubbled area? This, this represents the revisions that were made. And you have the proposed lot coverage and we testified to the forty-five percent, which includes the grass area portions of the driveway. This calculation over here is, um, no grass area.
Yeah, I'm curious where, where Ms. Grue, where Higher Group got the fifty-one point six, though. I, I highlighted that.
That's the, that's the.
Between the tire.
Right. No, the fifty-one and change is the plan that was submitted previously. The one I have on the screen is the one that was submitted yesterday.
Okay, so that's, that's the original plan. Okay.
And that's why we didn't see that. So we were going by the original plan. And that's why we had the fifty-one point six-two percent.
And I'd like to thank everybody for their flexibility in considering this. Thank you very much. But so that's as a result of including the outer ba- bounds of the parking area when Elena did the calculations?
Correct.
Correct.
Okay.
Well, no, I don't think she did the calculations. We did. So if I go to here. See, this is on the original plans. There's the fifty-one sixty-two.
Yeah, so for, to keep it consistent with the ordinance and should the board see fit to grant, uh, relief here, we should probably use the number, not the forty-five percent number that, uh, Jason, that you, that you calculated there, but the forty-nine point six number that would include, uh, the grass and the pavers and everything else in that area.
Yeah, I mean.
That's my opinion anyway.
Yeah, if, if you wanted to go down the rabbit hole of what makes pervious and impervious, we can bat that around for a while, but for simplicity, um, I think what you're suggesting is perfectly fine.
Okay, it says a quick question on that. So if, if we go with that forty-nine point six-three percent, the homeowners would have the flexibility to install the driveway as it is today or go completely asphalt or go completely paper?
No, because there, no, because there'd be a condition in the resolution that if the board sees fit to grant the relief, it was based upon the mitigating factors of the waffle area and the strips.
Right.
As depicted on the April sixth plan.
Right.
Yeah.
Now, interestingly enough, your rendering doesn't show the two by two and the grass strips in the, in the middle. That shows that, that honeycomb stuff that I've seen before at the golf club and stuff like that.
Yeah, you read my mind. I asked that question earlier today, too. But no, what governs here is, is, uh, this note on the plan right here.
Okay.
The colored rendering is conceptual in nature. The site plan is binding.
Yes.
By the way, the rendering is very nice.
Oh, yeah.
Thank you.
It looks really good.
So.
Okay.
Um, and, and, um, Mr. Chairman, just, I've been looking through the ordinance to find something about air conditioning units. And right now I can't find, that doesn't mean it's not there, but I can't find it in any, um, quick look and I don't.
I've been doing the same.
You know, I don't remember, yeah, seeing anything. Um, so I was hoping that I would be able to find something so that you would have something to go by, but I'm sorry.
Recall. I really don't. Guys, anybody, I mean, I'm on the board twelve years now and I don't recall. Ridgeway, do you remember anything about? If we've ever had a screening? Well, I don't think we have.
No, no. There's no, there's no, I think there's only setback off the property lines.
Yeah. I, um, I know we've done it for generators in the past, but, but not for air conditioning units.
Well, there's two different questions. One question is, does the ordinance require screening and mechanicals? Second question is whether it does or not. Second question is, does the ordinance require setbacks for the mechanicals? If it requires setbacks and they don't meet the setbacks, then you have the right to impose the screening requirement to mitigate any adverse impact.
Well, any setback, if there's an existing one there, you're gonna put a second one in, then it would be an exacerbation of the existing nonconformity. We could always ask for mitigating, so, you know, we could always ask them to mitigate the, the screen, the, you know, to put some sort of evergreen or, or, or a physical screen there.
So, so I, I thought that out of an abundance of caution, the board was considering granting relief for the proposed setbacks of the two air conditioning units. And if it does so, and Mr. Akins has stipulated on behalf of the applicant that they would have no objection to a condition that would require screening subject to reasonable satisfaction of the board planner. So that, that should cover all your bases on that. And I confirm that stipulation again. Yes.
Okay. Okay, good. Um, anybody else have questions of either the applicants or Mr. Fister? Let the record reflect none. Uh, public, anyone, members of the public have questions of either the applicants or the applicant's engineer? I don't see any hands up. Oh, I do. There is one hand there.
I'll bring in Mr. Ryan. Mr. Ryan, can you unmute?
Yes. Hi, good evening, everybody. I'm, uh, the next door neighbor, uh, four, three, one River Road in Fairhaven. How are you guys?
Sir, I'm sorry. Could you give us your full names, your last and your address for the record?
Sure. My name is Scott Ryan, S C O T T R Y A N, four, three, one River Road, Fairhaven. I am, I am lot number nine.
I'm, I'm sorry, sir. What was the address?
Four, three, one River Road, Fairhaven.
Okay, can we drop, Mr. Fister, can we drop the, uh, shared exhibit so I can see who's speaking here? There we go. Thank you. Mr. Mr. Ryan, can you give us a video? Can we see?
Sure, one minute. Yeah, one minute, please. I apologize.
It's okay.
Let me just do that. There we go. I had to get my own screen back on.
All right. Ask you to raise your right hand. We swear in. You do swear in testimony to give the board will be the truth, the whole truth and nothing but truth.
Absolutely, I do.
And what side are you on, sir? As you face it from the street, the left side or the right side?
I'm on the left side.
Thank you.
No, I just wanted to, uh, I was, I've been listening and I've been going through, uh, this whole proceeding and everything like that. And just on the fence line, it's a split rail fence and there is a hedge. Um, so just to, uh, clarify everything in that regard, so you guys have some type of illustration with that. And there is one AC unit that is there. And, um, when Mike, uh, proposed and Kim proposed, uh, you know, the, uh, plans and everything, we couldn't be more excited. Uh, my wife and I and my two kids, we really are. So, um, just wanted to put that forward as, uh, their new neighbors and, uh, really are looking forward to, uh, this to come through. Um, so I just wanted to, uh, put that, uh, into, for you to, uh, have some type of, of weight in this regard as well. Um, if you have any questions for me, I'd be happy to answer any, but, uh, we are excited for this.
Thank you, Mr. Ryan. Only, only question I had is, would you, would you, uh, want some sort of screening for the, uh, additional air conditioning units that are going in, uh, currently? I know you're probably gonna.
It depends upon the.
Stage or.
It depends upon the fence line, because the fence line is theirs. Um, and it is dilapidated. It's a two rail, split rail fence that goes all the way down to the end of their property. Um, if they decide to, you know, uh, put up a, a higher fence, or if they decide to put up a shrubbery on that side, um, you know, that really is up to them, but aesthetically, um, you know, I believe Mike and Kim have really great taste and everything of that nature for landscaping. So, you know, how the house comes, um, I think when those are, you know, put in place, we can, you know, look at that, you know, when it gets there. Um, but, uh, having a set plan right now, I, you know, I, I would hope they would, you know, want to make it look as nice as possible. So, you know, I trust them on that.
Great, thank you.
That's all I had, but I just wanted to say thank you and, um, you know, good luck and, uh, appreciate you letting me speak.
Great, thank you very much, Mr. Ryan. Okay. Any other hands in the audience? I see none. Anymore, Mr. Akins?
Applicant rest, Mr. Chair, board members. Thank you very much for the opportunity to make the presentation on behalf of the Pimpenellas.
Thank you. Deliberation. I'm not gonna be like, uh, like Dr. Lauffer and call on people, so, but I did like that. I'm gonna hold that one in, in my pocket.
All right, I'll go first then. Slugs. Um, I want to compliment Mr. Fister and Mr. Akin on their presentation. I think it was really well done and, uh, and well received. Uh, the proposed changes are aesthetically pleasing. I think the property, uh, the property itself poses some real restrictions and some real limitations. And, uh, the narrowness of the property itself is a hardship. Uh, the added bulk is in the rear of the house and not in the front of the house. Uh, and when you look at it from the front, I think the porch is a nice addition while still staying behind the, uh, uh, the front yard setback. I think overall it's a, uh, it's a nice proposal and, uh, and I have, I support it.
Thank you, Mr. Lauffer.
Yeah, I'll, I'll let her echo Dr. Lauffer's comments. I mean, job well done. I think it's modest. I think it's reasonable. I don't think you took advantage. And I think you put a lot of thought into the town, its, you know, historic value, the community, um, and it was just tastefully done. So full support from me.
I, I would agree, Peter, uh, with Dr. Lauffer and Andrew. Um, very nice proposal, nice presentation. Really like the aesthetic of the design and the renderings. Um, so yeah, um, I'd support this as well.
I would, uh, also concur with my fellow board members. You know, one of the things that I really, you know, this is an older house. It has a lot of challenges and they're, you know, they're gonna work within our master plan and renovate and not rebuild. Um, I also think just the, uh, the curb appeal that this new design is going to bring to the town. Um, you know, it's gonna be a welcome upgrade to what, you know, what is an older house and it's a little, you know, a little long in the tooth at this point. So, uh, you know, I fully support this. I think it's going to be a, uh, you know, a nice addition to our main street.
I concur as well, and I, I really appreciate the fact that the Pimpenellas came in, um, with an idea that did not look like they were trying to pour ten pounds of house into a five pound sack, which is what we usually see around here. You don't have fireplaces sticking out the windows and, uh, you know, lots of kooky stuff we see, um, a lot in Fairhaven. You are limited by a fifty foot wide lot, so I think you've really done, um, the very best you could do with it. So I support the application.
Yeah, I really don't have much more to add. I think it's a really nice plan. It looks great. And, um, I think it's gonna be a good addition to neighborhood. So, uh, I'll make a motion to, uh, X, to approve the application as submitted. Um, with the conditions of, uh, we will also grant relief for the additional air conditioning unit that is being added. And on the condition that the parking area, I guess we can go on the parking area, remain as depicted on the plan. Um, what did I miss, Mike?
And that the structure be maintained. This is not a tear down, build new. That's one of predicates of the application, so that the structure be maintained and renovated as per the plans.
Second.
Mr. Nuchesny?
Yes.
Ms. Quigley?
Yes.
Mr. Ridgeway?
Yes.
Mr. Lover Vera?
Yes.
Dr. Lauffer?
Yes.
Mr. Kinsella?
Yes.
Hey, congratulations.
Thank you all very much. We appreciate your time.
Thank you, Mr. Akins.
Good evening. Nice to see you all.
Thank you.
Everybody. Thanks.
Thank you.
Time.
Right. Um, we have done the administrative items already, already. Um, any members of the public, wanted to use your chance to make comments, criticisms, questions? Floor is yours. I don't see any hands up.
Mr. Chairman, before we forget, might I suggest that we tag the definition of lot coverage as something we may want to reference in our annual report?
Yeah, I've got, yes, exactly. Those are, uh, the big time annual reporting, yes. I wrote here impervious pervious driveway. Ooh, thunder.
Well.
Thunder.
Just as a, just as a note, definitions tend to be the most important part, oftentimes, the most important part of an ordinance. And that's what we kind of teach when we teach at graduate school planning. We tell our students, make sure you know definitions, that if you have the definitions all screwed up, it's gonna be a mess. And as we've just discovered with the lot area definition. So, you know, it's just, everybody thinks you just kind of throw in definitions and they're so important.
And I think sometimes in our ordinance, you know, we think we're being strict by saying we don't care if it's pervious or impervious. It's gonna count against the lot coverage. And we think that means that's a good thing that we're saying that, that we're being strict. But in fact, we're saying to people, we don't care if you put down asphalt or you try to put yourself out and do something to help our drainage. So I think it's sort of, a lot of these definitions come under the law of unintended consequences. And then we're dealing with things that are not the way we want things to be done at all.
Yeah.
Well, and the other problem is some things start out pervious and end up impervious if they're not properly maintained. So gra- gravel could be pervious until it silts up and becomes like concrete. That's why I think it's better to simply stick with structure and not whether it's, and structure is defined in municipal land use law and not whether something is pervious today, not pervious tomorrow, impervious. And we have these difficulties and these problems. And you also have the, the aesthetic. So even if water can perk through it, like a slotted deck, would you want someone to deck their entire property? No.
Right.
Aesthetically, it's terrible. So for what it's worth.
Yep.
Yep.
Thank you.
Well. It was nice, it was nice meeting you all on Zoom.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Grue, for your substitution.
I would, I would compliment you on the manner in which you were in your meeting and your comments. They're very, very nice. So I'm happy to have been participating tonight. Thanks again.
Thank you, Susan. Thanks, Anne. Nice having you. Anybody else? Everybody good? Motion to adjourn?
Motion to second.
All right.
All in favor, aye.
Thank you all. Stay well.
Thanks, everyone. Have a good night.
Night.
Nice job again, Doc.
Thanks, Peter.